... time, we'll go ahead and do the roll call. Kathy?
Mr. Denio?
Here.
Mr. Seveson?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Crabbe?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Brent Miles, absent.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, we'll have a report from the planning director.
Good morning, Paul Thompson sitting in for Michael Johnson. Just as a briefing, last Tuesday I presented to the Board of Supervisors the Planning Division's Work Program for the remainder of the fiscal year. Kind of went through kind of the things that we were working on. Some of those are the Plaster County Conservation Plan, the Granite Bay Community Plan. Also went through some of the programs that we're trying to implement as part of the housing element that was adopted last May. Those are Affordable Housing Baking Program, the Tahoe Basin Second Units, allowing for that, Affordable Housing Waiver Program, and the Emergency Shelter Zoning Tax Amendment. That was before your commission a few months ago. Also, some of the other zoning tax amendments that we're working on, I discussed which relate to structural setback changes, making that more clear as far as definitions of structures and front setbacks. And we're looking at other zoning tax amendments relating to temporary agricultural events, allowing for relief for agricultural events that go to multiple locations, each time they wouldn't have to apply for a separate permit for each location. The HAN ordinance, and what's before you today, the Medical Marijuana Zoning Tax Amendment. Also discussed a little bit about the preparation of the Dry Creek Greenways Master Plan, the update of the Landscape Design Guidelines, and then our participation with, in support of the 2010 Census Update. So with that, we got concurrence from the board that, yeah, this is good, continue to work on these items until, you know, for the remainder of the fiscal year. As part of that discussion, the MAC, or the Board, discussed the items, presentations in front of the Municipal Advisory Councils, and what items should go before the MACs. Whether, should it just be items that are to the Planning Commission, or zoning tax amendment? Right now, we're proceeding with most of the zoning tax amendments going to Municipal Advisory Councils. That results in at least two meetings for each item. There's thirteen MACs. Supervisor Euler indicated that that's a lot of time spent on each zoning tax amendment, and concern about getting these items moved forward. So, given that, we were given direction to come back to the Planning Commission to get their recommendation as to what items should go before MACs, and then provide the Board with a report, and ultimately get direction from them about, you know, what items should go to MACs, how that should all work. So with that, if there's any questions, be happy to answer those.
What's our February schedule again?
February, looks like there's two meetings in February. One on the February 11th, right Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
And that looks like Livingston Concrete and Gondola North Project. And then February 25th is the Bohemia Draft EIR Public Comment. And was there another one on there?
Nope.
I think that's it. So, two meetings in February, as it looks right now.
I'll miss the last meeting in February.
What's up?
I won't be here for the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
February, March, and most of April.
All right.
For Kathy's information.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Paul.
Continue the marijuana.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Paul. Maybe if I could, just let everyone know that we had a, we, I just sat in, but we had a huge TRPA meeting yesterday, and the three-lane, four-lane issue that was so constant up in the air, finally got approved at TRPA on a unanimous vote.
Okay.
So, we did the right thing. The other thing is they approved a large, low-cost housing project in Kings Beach area. So, they did pretty well yesterday.
Good.
And I thought the county staff did a good job of representing themselves, got everyone to agree.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, well, now is an opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody here that wishes to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda today, step forward at this time. Okay, seeing none. Oops, watch that.
Are we gonna have lunch here, Kathy?
Uh, yes, we will in the back room. It's gonna be catered in.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, we'll move forward with our agenda today, and the first item on the agenda is an extension of time up at North Star Tahoe. And so, let me see, we'll go ahead with that presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you indicated, the first item before you is an extension of time for the S-Pod, which is a chairlift and associated trails, and snowmaking alignment out at the North Star Tahoe. This, here's a vicinity map, and air photo. We'll go right to the site plan here. Again, this is kind of on the north end of the backside area of North Star Tahoe. Back in 2007, your commission approved this project, as has continued to be proposed. The applicants are now requesting a two-year extension of time for this project. They have been in the process of pursuing permits from CAL FIRE, and staff is recommending the approval of the findings that will be required, which is diligent pursuit of the implementation of this permit based on the difficulty, or the time that has been occupied on trying to obtain those permits. So, the only conditions of approval that we are suggesting be changed just are relative to the extension of the expiration date of the permit. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Okay, questions from the Commission? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Okay, is there somebody from the North Star group here that would like to get up and speak? Okay. Come on forward and introduce yourself and...
My name is Tim Beck. I'm with the Booth Creek Ski Holdings and North Star Resort. I have no comments, but I appreciate any help you can provide for us. It's been, as you know, difficult economic times, but at the same time, we've been diligently trying to pursue with the CAL FIRE, the clearing permits for this. So, we're in the process of actually going to be doing a pre-harvest inspection as soon as the snow goes, and we're hoping to proceed with part of this project this coming summer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Well, if there's no questions or comments, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To the Development Review Committee, recommend the Planning Commission approve, and I so make that motion, the first two-year extension of time of the conditional use permit for the proposed ski lifts, rerun, and snowmaking alignments, subject to the following findings, and I include the findings one through three, and the conditional use permit, items one through three as well. Second.
Okay, well, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It's almost sinful to drive that far for such a quick item. Get back in time to the scheme.
Okay, well, let me see, the next item on our agenda that we'll proceed to, and I see we're at ten minutes after, and this is scheduled for 10:10, so we can move forward. So, at this time, Stacy, would you like to come forward, or Steve, you're gonna do this again?
I will. I'll take this one for Stacy.
Yeah.
Thank you again. The second item for your consideration is the Doherty Cabin Edition. This is a subdivision modification. The Doherty property is located off of Chapel Lane in the Tahoe City area, access to Chapel Lane is off of Cathedral Drive, which is also accessed off of State Route 89. Ten of the lots of this original subdivision contained a forty-foot front building setback line, and this is located in... Sorry about that. The Doherty property is a typical Tahoe, Tahoe City cabin. It does contain a 1,235 square foot, single-family residence, paved driveway and parking area. The topography or slope of the site is consistent with a lot of the parcels in this subdivision of twenty percent. What the applicants would like to do is add on some additional living space to this cabin. The living space addition would be approximately 462 square feet. That forty-foot subdivision setback line that I indicated, of that, approximately 183 square foot of their proposed addition would be located in that forty-foot setback area. The setback requirements for the zone district are twenty-foot from front property line, so there's no need for a variance, simply a modification of the original subdivision map to allow for this encroachment. As I indicated earlier, this subdivision map was originally recorded in 1963, and ten of those parcels, I'm exactly certain why, but only ten of those parcels included the forty-foot setback line. When you travel through this subdivision, it is apparent that a number of the properties do have encroachments into their forty-foot setback line, because of which the staff has made the finding that this proposed project would not significantly alter the original design of the subdivision. So, here's some photos of the site. The proposed improvements would be situated, obviously, between the roadway front property line and the existing site improvements. It's a little difficult to tell the paving area and whatnot based on the snow conditions. So, in any case, staff is recommending approval of the final map modification for the Cathedral Forest, subject to the findings and recommended conditions of approval as they appear in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Questions? Okay. Let me see, are the Doherty's here, or somebody to represent them? Okay.
I'm Bill Doherty. Really no comments to what Steve had said, other than the house we've owned for fifteen years. We have a growing family of grandchildren, and that's the main purpose of it. That's all.
Okay, thank you. See, anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Okay, I guess I'll move that we approve the subdivision modification, PSM 20090380 to the Cathedral Forest Final Map, and subject to the recommended conditions as shown for the sequel findings and the subdivision modification findings. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead with the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries. Thank you. Oh, and also, I need to mention that I don't think anybody's here that's probably gonna appeal it, but there is appeal time of ten days and a fee of $495 if anybody wishes to appeal. The decision was just made. Okay, well, we're moving right along today, and it looks like our next item comes up at 10:20, so we'll need to take a moment to get a cup of coffee, I guess.
Who's this guy? I've never seen him before. Cup of coffee. I think I'll... Oh, is your coffee back there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Hey, what are you doing here?
I asked them. I'm looking so cool. Hooking into the handy cap.
You? Dapper today. Must be something at that time.
Is it birds?
Bringing up last bit before I... Except for the marijuana item later?
I'll try it always.
Okay.
You gotta have an item.
Well, I see.
Talk about handy cap space.
Okay.
Oh, I see, yes.
So, yeah, we talked about it.
Well, here's one.
I think when we, we do that part here.
Huh? Get ourselves in trouble here.
Maybe the audience is gonna be small.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. Well, go ahead, and Michael, wanna go ahead and get started?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a vicinity map of the project here. Project site is actually over here. It's eighty acres in size. It's located about a mile and a quarter west of Highway 49 on Atwood Road in the North Auburn area. Site is currently undeveloped, and land uses in the area include rural residential home sites to the north, west, and south, and rural residential and rural estate to the east. Zoning on the site, as shown on this map, is residential ag, forty thousand square foot minimum, and there's a planned development designation on the property of one unit per acre. The Auburn Bowman Community Plan designation for the site is rural, low-density residential, with lot sizes ranging from point nine to point, 2.3 acres in size. Here's an aerial of the site. Again, the project is the large rectangle here. Some of the significant natural features on the site include the highest point, which is up in here, which is a knoll, and generally slopes tend to go this way to the south and from Atwood this way. We also have Dead Man's Ravine, which is a perennial stream that flows from east to west through the site here. As you can see, there's a significant amount of oak woodland on the site. Of the eighty-acre site, fifty-three acres is woodland. We have a grassland component here in the middle of about twenty-four acres, and the remainder consists of riparian vegetation and a little bit of wetland. Give you some background here. Project's been with us for a while. The initial application was submitted in October 2003, and at that time, what was submitted was for a sixty-one lot, lot and block subdivision, as we see here. It had a looped road system, two crossings of Dead Man Ravine, and an access onto Atwood Road at this point. The open space set aside for this was limited to the stream corridor here. When the Environmental Review Committee reviewed the application, we determined that an EIR would be required, and following that, there were two admin draft EIRs that were prepared for this project, one in March of 2005 and one in June of 2007. It was when we started preparing to put the draft EIR together that the applicant and staff discussed the feasibility of developing this property using the PD designation. One of the alternatives in the EIR was Alternative C, which is a planned development designation. Utilizing the planned development would allow for the same number of lots as what was proposed before, but it was also allowed for smaller lot sizes and some flexibility in where these lots would be constructed. The PD alternative would also then allow for greater resource protection through open space set-asides and reducing the number of stream crossings from two, as we see here, to one. The net result in developing the site as a PD then is a project that's consistent with the anticipated real estate trends, and a project that, through its design, has considerably reduced development impacts. What staff did then, we talked to the EIR preparer and directed them to revisit the alternative section of the draft EIR, and to prepare a more quantitative and comprehensive impact analysis of this alternative. The draft EIR was completed and circulated in December of 2008, and your commission held a hearing to take comments on this in January 2009. The final EIR, which includes the draft EIR, comments and responses to these comments, revisions to the draft EIR, and a mitigation monitoring program, was completed in October 2009, and that's the document you have, that we sent you just recently. Let's get on to Alternative C here, the PD alternative. This is the project description. This is the projects being proposed today by the applicant. The Atwood Eighty Project proposes developing a sixty-five lot, not a sixty-one lot, planned development on this eighty-acre site. Lot sizes will range generally from twenty-five to thirty-seven thousand square feet, although there is a larger lot in the corner that's about fifty-six thousand square feet in size. It will be a phased project. Phasing is proposed here. Phase one, as we see, is forty-two lots. These are the lots that are gonna be adjacent to the roadway that'll connect Atwood through to the emergency access up here. So, phase one is this. Second lot, second phase then would be the remaining lots over here. There'll be a single ungated entry at Atwood Road, which is right here. There'll be a single crossing of Dead Man Ravine, right here. There will be frontage improvements constructed along Atwood Road and a left-turn pocket for eastbound traffic to get access to the subdivision. One of the significant improvements required is going to be the installation of a sewer system, and that'll be basically following the length of the roadway here and going off-site into an adjacent parcel called the Jogger Twenty Parcel, which is not a part of the subdivision, but off-site improvements will take place on this. These off-site improvements include emergency access road, be gated approximately at this location, that'll take you up to Jogger Road here. The sewer line will follow the same route and then cut across and eventually connect with Bell Road over here. The sewer will also require a new lift station to be constructed at this location here, and the variance that we have in the application in front of you is the location of this lift station being too close to the roadway right-of-way. So, we're asking for a reduction in the setback for that. The project will have five open space lots, two of which on either side of the ravine that actually go down into here. They'll serve to protect the riparian corridor, a portion of the woodlands, and a portion of the grassland area. Lot C, which is thirteen acres in size, is there for the resource protection for the oak woodlands. And the last two lots, D and E, are actually along the frontage here. They'll provide a landscape buffer, some noise attenuation, and that's where the trail easements will go, that'll connect eastward this way. One thing that the tentative map shows is a potential park site at this location called Lot F. The project would be sixty-four lots and a park site. We do, we will be talking about this momentarily. The applicant is requesting an in-lu fee payment and other arrangements with Parks Department instead of putting active recreation on the site, in which case, this would be converted into a residential lot, which would be sixty-five lots. Along that bay, and the applicant, it does propose to pay additional park fees, park fees, provide trail easements along the frontage area of the project, and an adjoining parcel to the east, which is here, that will connect to the trail system, the easement that was set aside with Hidden Creek, that'll eventually connect over here to the Dewitt Center. And should the commission make findings to allow for this alternative, the applicant will pay in-lu park fees, and also annex into the landscaping and lighting district of the Atwood Ranch Project, which is a subdivision nearby. We'll talk briefly about the environmental here. The EIR was prepared... The EIR was prepared for the project, and the implementation of the mitigation measures described in this EIR are expected to reduce most of the potentially significant impacts to less-than-significant levels. There are two areas, though, that this is not the case. One is transportation and circulation, where in the future, the service standards will exceed the level of service standards. The second area that will not be mitigated fully is the loss of oak woodland and oak woodland habitat. These remain significant and avoidable, unavoidable after mitigation. For this reason, we're going to be asking the commission to approve a statement of overriding consideration, and that's in your packet as Attachment G, which has been prepared for this project and must be adopted as part of the project approval. Pages six through nine of the staff report that you have provides a summary of the environmental issues that were addressed in the EIR and also a summary of the mitigation measures of that EIR that reduce impacts to less-than-significant levels. It did go to the North Auburn MAC. We took it to them on November tenth of two thousand and nine, has an action item on their agenda, and the MAC voted five to zero to recommend the commission approve this PD alternative to the project. Briefly, I want to turn your focus to the conditions, and I know you had a couple of handouts today, one of which was the phasing plan. Another is a condition from Parks that inadvertently was not included in the conditions, and this is a Parks condition that the applicant has read. The other thing we're requesting is, on Condition one forty-three, and in your packet, sets on page forty-three, Condition one forty-three establishes development standards for the subdivision, which we can do as a PD. We have a front setback of fifty feet. We would like to change that to forty feet, and we'll make the changes according to that when we get into the development notebook requirements, too. So that's Condition one forty-three on page forty-three. We'd like to change the front setback from fifty feet to forty feet. Also in the condition, if we go to page thirty, Condition eighty-one, which has to do with tree mitigation here, we left this as kind of one condition or an optional second condition. I just want to explain briefly what this is about. This relates to the oak woodland mitigation. The first part of the condition is the standard mitigation that we have developed following the change in SEQA relating, related to the oak woodlands and loss of oak woodlands in the state. The second part of the condition where it says "or," the second part there, is a condition that's proposed by the applicant. Staff has determined that although these represent two different approaches to offset the loss of oak woodlands, both of them meet the intent of the mitigation measure that's described in the EIR, and so we're going to request that the commission select one of the two of these today. So in summary here, our recommendation is that the commission approve the tentative subdivision map, the conditional use permit, and the variance for a sixty-five lot planned residential development. This is Alternative C in the EIR, and certify the EIR for the Atwood Eighty subdivision based on the findings and recommended conditions of approval as modified that are attached to this report. And that sums up our presentation. If you have any questions?
Questions?
See, I might have a couple here, just one. Let's see, when I look at the map, I notice that there's several lots that seem to be split by a tentative, I mean, a ephemeral drainage. I'm thinking of forty-six, forty-two, sixty-three, four. And so I guess what my question is dealing with is, if those lots are split by this drainage, I guess at what point in time, or, you know, when somebody comes in to build a house on that lot, what's the plan to assure that the drainage is still functioning, or...
There'll be an easement across those, a drainage easement.
Could you show on the map where those are?
Right through here, right through here.
Okay, and the function of that drainage easement will be to...
Basically to transport the runoff through, through those areas, off into the Dead Man's Ravine drainage there. Non-development areas, in other words, they will not be disturbed by development.
Oh, okay, so I guess we've verified that...
Yes.
...there's enough of a building envelope there to...
Yes, there is.
Okay. Let's see, the other question I have is with regards to the trail easement in the front, the trail easement in the front of the, of the...
Okay.
...project. Excuse me, I remember on the adjacent project to the east that we had quite a discussion about the trail easement there.
I brought Parks today.
Huh?
I brought the Parks Department today.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess what I'm wondering, yeah, maybe we need to hear about that, but it seems to me we required the project to actually build the trail at that time. My mind might be...
No, that's correct.
And then the homeowners association is going to maintain it?
To maintain it, correct.
And so is this project consistent with what was...
This will be consistent with that, yes.
What's that?
It'll be consistent, yes.
Okay, so the, the trail will be built at some point in time, but in the, before this project's finished, I guess, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Is Parks have anything to add to that, or...
Good morning. Andy Fisher with the Parks Division. We have been working with the applicant on this project. This is the, the Hidden Creek parcel and the Atwood Eighty, of course. In the adjoining area is a one-acre lot owned by a third party that neither the developers own. The developer is in consultation for a potential of a trail easement across this lot, but because of the uncertainty of whether or not that could be attained or not, we set up an either-or performance on mitigations for park fees that they would either, either support trail connection over to the Atwood Ranch Three Park because of its close proximity to this development or provide onsite recreation. So this, this sheet that you had in front of you this morning, the intent of that was to, to structure that as an either-or performance for either building the trail, supporting access to the Atwood Three Park, Atwood Three Ranch, or providing onsite rec. Directly to answer your question, it is, it's modeled exactly after the Hidden, excuse me, the Hidden Creek development where it will be built. It will be maintained, the trail would be maintained by the developer along their frontage until such time as Auburn Rec District would take that into their inventory. Auburn Rec District maintains the, the L and L District that Mike referred to that pays for recreational facilities.
Okay. Okay, any, any further questions?
I have one other question, Mike. You mentioned earlier that, this is working, that they were going to annex to the other lighting district at Atwood...
Atwood Ranch Three, which is across the street and to...
Do they have to vote to let them come in, or is that just automatic? It's the lighting district, I think?
Landscape and lighting.
Oh, landscape and lighting, okay.
To annex into it, yes.
So it's managed by a public entity then?
By ARD.
Okay.
He's got it.
Okay, thank you.
Public park and public access.
So we don't have, we're not depending on a vote of those people, do we accept this?
No.
Okay, maybe one more question, Mike. I did notice a comment from the Sheriff's Department questioning the gated emergency access, and so I guess it kind of brings to mind why, why are we having that gated? If it's open to Joger Road, why do we gate it in this project?
It's, it's not open to Joger Road. This is emergency access only and also access for maintaining the sewer. It's not to be a through access to Joger Road. It's not a public road to go all the way through here.
Okay, so it'll be gated at Joger Road then, too?
It will be at Joger Road, right.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you showed the gate being within the project.
I'm sorry, there, yeah, there's going to be one definitely right here where this little bulb is, and then it's going to be gated over here as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
How did you address the sheriff's concern about, you know, his patrolman, patrol people being able to access or use that emergency?
Same as the fire department with like a Knox box type of thing for access.
You say, yeah, yeah.
The Knox box, where they, they just have, they can just key through.
Key through?
Yeah.
It's a consistent key that...
So it's just, so the public can't do it, just, just the emergency service providers have access.
Okay.
Yeah.
Apparently, I don't see the sheriff here, so they must have been satisfied with the answer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any further questions?
The property to the north, I think, that the access to Jager Road, does the applicant own that property as well?
No, that's, that's owned by the diocese here in town.
And they've agreed to approve all the...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike. Okay, is the project proponent here?
Of course.
Yeah.
Jack Remington, representing, got to remember which one this is, Atwood Ranch LLC. I, I would really like to answer your questions a little better, if I may.
Okay.
Okay. First off, the property to the north is owned by the Sacramento Bishop's Diocese. The Catholic bishop owns it. We have a, a signed agreement between the LP and the bishop's office regarding the easement and what's necessary to go in there, and they may be looking at subdividing that in the future. It's, it's a site that was given to them. It's not suitable for any other purposes, so they're talking about possibly subdividing it. And there would be controlled gates. A Knox box is a box on the gate that has a master key to open it. Everybody, every emergency group has that key, and inside is the unlock for the gate, so they don't have to go get a key somewhere. And also, there's some new electronic devices which we're looking at that might be able to have your handheld switch and just open it up electronically, but we're not to that point yet. Okay, the, the big issue, and I know we're going to hear about it, is the little one-acre lot that's out on Atwood Road. It's owned by a lady who lives there, and I have talked to her. She is not necessarily interested in giving an easement. It is something we will have to see if we can come up with a way we could put it onsite without offending her and affecting her leach field and so on. But right now, we will be building it as a part of the project on our property, and it will be built on the adjoining property on the other side of the house. That has to be resolved as to how to connect those two. As far as the parks go, we did Atwood Three, which is the, the big subdivision back crossing the jail, and we put a trail, paved trail, all the way along Atwood Road on that project. We would have liked to have considered continuing that. The problem is there's three or four houses in the way that are real close to the road and difficult. So Andy and the Parks Department has been working on possibly a pathway on the north side of Atwood all through the DeWitt property, so we're saying that's what we're talking about connecting to.
Okay.
Okay, as far as the request to not require a park on the site, because ARD manages and actually owns the land for the Atwood Three Park that's existing, which has the creek, the pond, the play area, the trails, all that, there is supposed to be a letter in the file from ARD that they would be interested in having us work with them on that park for funding rather than put another park on site. And then also, if you go down Atwood and go up Richardson, you get right to the regional park, and they feel that with a trail system, it would be more conducive and more used for those two parks to have people come to them and put another park in here. Now, keep in mind, if we put a park on the site, it would be private, only for these residents. The other side of the coin is, we've done two, Monteverdi Estates and the Vineyard, where we've done private parks because they were PDs and they are not used. People, they're, they're large enough lots, people put in their own swimming pools, they have their own basketball court and so on, and my understanding is those homeowners associations are thinking about maybe trying to do away with their parks. So I would like, we would like to not have to build one here because of the proximity. I think that's all. We've been at this a long time, as Mike mentioned. I wasn't going to say the date, but he did, so anyhow, six, six years and four months. So I'll be glad to answer any other questions you have.
Any questions from the commission?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Okay, now is the opportunity for a public comment, and so if you could step forward one at a time, or at least get, if there's a whole bunch, then get in the queue and we'll recognize you.
Thank you. My name's Gary Sanchez. I live off of Atwood Lane. You know, if I can take a moment, show you where I live. My property is this piece of ground right here. What I'm going to discuss is a syphon pipe. I believe it's this. Is this a syphon? This, this is what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
I'm part of the Oak Creek subdivision, and we get our raw water from that pipe. I believe there's approximately fifteen services that come off of that pipe, mine and about fourteen others. There's another one on Atwood Road that I believe gets service off of that pipe. The reason I put my house where it is back in seventy-nine, which sits down here at the bottom, is that this is a gravity flow pipe. For those of you that are unfamiliar with that, it, raw water typically does not require or is not pressurized. So typically, an open ditch, if you're going to irrigate property, you have to put that into a pipe, pressurize it with electric pumps, build your system accordingly and do your irrigation. When I bought this piece of property, the reason I, the main point of the property, why I bought it, was it had gravity flow water, which required no pumping, and it came out of that pipe. Now, my question is, I haven't heard in any of the discussions, I haven't, in the article, in all the information that I've read, I haven't seen that piece of pipe discussed. I brought it up at one of the previous meetings. I still haven't seen it discussed. I called NID on Monday, talked to the engineering, engineering department. They had little to no contact with the developer concerning that piece of, a piece of pipe and what was going to happen to it. On my piece of property, NID has an easement through that. They came through about fifteen, twenty years ago and upgraded an old redwood pipe, an old metal pipe, redid a section of that through my property, brought in caterpillars, brought in trenching, took down trees to maintain their facility. When I pulled that easement up on my property, it was nondescriptive. It just said easement. Didn't say how wide, how narrow. It's ingress and egress to maintain that pipe. So my question is, and my concern is both, is what's going to happen with that pipe? Keeping in mind that it's, in some places, it's exposed, laying on the ground, in other places, it's twelve inches deep, other places, it's three inches deep, and it's a steel pipe about twenty-four inches in diameter or less. When you're going to build houses over the top of that, I wouldn't want my house over the top of that pipe. Plus, concerning the easement, what about the easement? My other concern is what's going to happen with our pressure? All these houses, if anybody knows any different, please correct me, our manifold sits up here, feeds somewhere in one of these houses over here, and all of this is all gravity feeding from this, all gravity feed over here. What is going to happen to that pressure on that pipe? Is it going to get relocated? What's going to happen with the easement? And if the pressure is damaged, meaning I have, now I have no pressure, NID has assured us that we will continue to be their customer, that this project will not interfere, interfere with the service through our, their customers. They're not saying you're not, they're going to continue that pressure. They're saying we're going to continue to give you service, but if now, if my pressure goes from thirty pounds to zero, I have to install electric pumps, and I assume everybody else does, in this era of being green, now we've, we've broken something that wasn't fixed. So I would, I would have to incur the cost of pumping, monthly utility rates, and so on, so that's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions?
Okay, is there anybody else that has a comment? Okay, step forward.
Hi, I want to ask if I...
Oh, step forward to the microphone, please.
Oh, okay.
And introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Mary Payne, and I'm the little old lady that lives in that property that they want to put an easement through, and I say no. I've lived there 57 years. My property is surrounded by all this hidden creek and this property that they're trying to develop. I've enjoyed it for 57 years. The original plan that I said I had no problem with has been changed. There was nothing about an easement or a trail. And I understand that the trail would come, my fence would have to be moved, and the trail would go through my property. No way do I want that. I originally had no problems with this development, but I do now. In four or five years, the traffic on Atwood has increased tremendously. Sometimes it takes me four or five times to get out of the driveway. I don't see how it can take care of 65 homes. My other concern is a water pressure. That's a lot of houses, and I don't know if NID can take care of this. They haven't said, well, we'll take care of it, and they've never been able to assure us. That is a beautiful piece of property. I've enjoyed it, and, but I hate to see it developed. I mean, it's gonna change, I know, I'm just one person, and it's not gonna make a difference, but when I look out my window now, I see wildlife, sunsets, whatever. I'm gonna be looking at rooftops and houses. No, that isn't what the end of my life should be like.
Leave it right there. Leave it right there.
Okay.
I might say a few words of my, I'm Arthur Payne. I'm owner, half-owner.
Say, sir, just hold a minute.
Hi.
Uh, just hold it a minute. Okay, I wanted to thank the previous for her comments.
Okay.
Okay, and could you repeat your name again, and then go ahead with your comment?
Okay. My name is Arthur Payne. I'm half-owner of the property that she was talking about. I've, At Home has been there for over 50 years. They wanna come in, and they wanna put a walkway along Atwood Road, which would go through our leach lines also. That's another problem. Anyway, that's our main concern. We lose some oak trees, we just lose everything if they put that development in there. I think there's enough homes around this area that are vacant now that we don't need anymore. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public comment period and turn it back to, to Jack.
Okay, I'd like to, I, I already talked about Mrs. Payne's property, and I understand, I went to see her, and it turns out she knows my wife, and so she knows where I live, so I have to be careful. Sorry about that. I thought that was funny when I walked up there. Anyhow, regarding the water issue for Mr. Sanchez, I have met with NID, I've met with, I even wrote her name down, Shannon Bradley, who's the business coordinator, and we had a meeting with the right-of-way people and the pipeline people, and they said that, that line would have to be relocated when it's on our, our new lots, but we would not necessarily change where it leaves the property. So if you know gravity water, we could raise or lower it in between, but it, the outlet and inlet are the important things, and they're both offsite. Secondly, the treated water issue, this project will loop the water line between Atwood Road and Joga Road so that there will be more water, I won't say more volume, but it should be better pressure because it's gonna be served from two sides. Okay, and, yeah, those were the two things that, that were stated, or questions. And if, if Mr. Sanchez wants a copy of the tentative map, it shows that water line going through that little road there and then connecting up to where it is now at his end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, I close the public hearing.
Well, Jack got to talk.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that okay, Jack? So what, I guess his response is, doesn't matter what you do to the pipe in the middle from the beginning to the end, doesn't matter what you do in the middle, because your pressure's gonna stay the same. Is that correct? Is that, is that your, your response? That you're not gonna change the pressure in that pipe?
Need to understand the hearing process, and I can't answer from back here and record it, so.
Right.
You can come on up, you can...
Mr. Sanchez, you have to address the commission, if you could.
Okay, so my concern is that his response is that, I need to understand what his response is. I'm not, I'm uncertain what his response is. Is he or is he not gonna change the pressure in that pipe?
Okay, well, if you'd like to sit down, then I'll ask him.
I, I can't stand here and say absolutely there will be no reduction or increase. I know from talking to the NID, they felt that because the inlet and the outlet is maintained and the pipe size would be maintained, there's no change in the flow of water through that pipe. Okay, now, we've done siphons before, and it doesn't change inlet and outlet. It, it's just, it gets relocated.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well...
Can I ask one question?
Oh.
If there is a change...
Okay, get to the microphone and...
If there is a change and the pressure's less, will the existing homeowners be compensated for that? Because now we're gonna have to incur costs to offset the loss of pressure. That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that there is a condition of approval, condition 58, that requires a will-serv letter from the Nevada Irrigation District and the county, the, the Nevada Irrigation District will have to review the improvement plans for this project, and will make sure that all their needs are met for this project.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Paul, then. Why isn't that done now before we're voting on it?
Oh, yeah, let me, at this point, process-wise, let me bring it back to the commission, and so, go ahead commissioners, and if you have questions or comments, you're free. Go ahead.
You heard the question?
I would think as a part of the process, before we, we sign or issue the improvement plans, Nevada Irrigation District would review the piping and the sizing and make sure that the flow requirements are met before those plans are, are issued to be constructed.
Well, I would like to have that done before we vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Well, yeah, I guess the concern that I hear is that they're using raw water for domestic use. Is that the bottom line here?
No, there's two, two different...
Well, can the health department or anybody speak to that? I guess not.
Hi, Leslie Limbo, Environmental Health. Could you please repeat your question?
Well, I guess my question is, I'm, I'm not sure why pressure is such a big item unless, if it's being used for domestic purposes rather than irrigation. Is, is, is that permitted, or how, where do we stand on this?
There, there are some houses in the county that do use ditch water, we would call it, but if, when we become aware of it because of a permit, they would need to have a potable water source. We don't consider the canal water to be potable. So if, if they're using it for irrigation purposes, we don't have a concern. I'm not aware of any homes in this area that are using the canal water for, for their domestic uses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little mystified that, it seems like the issue is between that gentleman and, and the Nevada Irrigation District, as much as it is, whatever they permit, it's their line, they own the line, they service with it, whatever they permit is what they permit. It's, it's outside our purview.
Yeah, I, I can speak to it my own, because I do buy NID water out of, out of Lincoln, and I, I have to pump it. And I don't know what the gentleman's contract is, you know, on, on minor inches, but I know on mine, I have the rights to that water, and they provide it. Now, there's no guarantee of, of pressure or anything, 'cause my neighbor to the north of me is up on a hill, and so he can't pump from the creek, and he, he comes off a canal. And he, he's with a whole bunch of other homeowners, and they have to work together as to who irrigates at what time and, and stuff. So it's just a guarantee of the water. I don't know of, of anything unless it's in his contract that he's guaranteed a certain amount of water and a certain pressure. And that's my...
We're having, this, this is the commission that's discussing it right now?
I have a question, Paul.
Huh?
I can answer Mr. Denial's question.
Uh, you know, I think that we need to have a discussion here on the, on the topic, so.
Well, I, I guess, either way, because either he has, you know, an agreement with NID to supply water to certain pressure and a certain amount of water, or he's just guaranteed water. And I think it falls back to what Larry said. It's more of a, probably an issue between NID and him versus how the piping comes through.
Okay. So, yeah, it sounds like Mr. Sanchez, that, that the issue that you're feeling, it's an important issue to you, but you'll need to address that with NID. So...
And Mr. Denial's right.
Excuse me.
Sanchez, you're not recognized.
Um, Mr. Chair, if you wanna take more testimony, you will have to reopen the public hearing.
Right. Okay, at this time, you know, I think we'd like to continue our discussion, Mr. Sanchez, if you could sit down. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Denial's right.
Mr. Sanchez, could you sit down? I'd appreciate it. Okay, other issues or comments, or comments on that topic? Okay, one question for Parks, maybe?
The trail issue that was brought up...
Yes, sir.
At any rate, this project is gonna be required to build a, a trail, and the previous project on the other side of this one acre parcel built a trail. So at any rate, as far as the parcel in between and the fact that they're reluctant to grant that easement, you know, in terms of the ultimate plan, how do you view that? Or how, how's...
The, the county doesn't make any intention to compel the third-party owner, Mrs. Payne, I believe, to convey any easement. That's not part of what we do. Because it's part of our community plan, as projects come forward, we collect easements as we get them and/or construct. One thing that's at, at issue here is the part, the PD ordinance requires the provision of onsite recreation unless your commission makes a finding that it's infeasible. What our department said was that due to the proximity of the Atwood Ranch Three Park, within walking distance of this park, that with the support and provision of a trail, a pedestrian access to that nearby park, that, that we would not oppose a, a finding of, of infeasibility or substantive equivalence, kind of a thing. That's why we wrote the condition to leave room either way. If they could create that connection for us and make that, that connection, if not, then, then our conditions are written that they would provide onsite recreation of one sort or another, of which there's, they have some leeway in, in how they would design that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, or are we ready to move forward with the motion?
Just a question for the rest of the panel. Is there any way that NID could use our approval of this map to say, well, I'm sorry, we can't service the gentleman any more this way because of this?
I don't know, I'd have, I guess I'd have to address that to...
I could, I could probably shed some light on that. Typically jurisdictions like the Fire District, Sewer District, and the Water District, in this case, does not review improvement, the technical parts until the improvement plans come in. At this point, at the tentative map and environmental review purposes, those details haven't been hammered out, nor do we typically require the applicant to do that at this time. When the improvement plans come in, that's when the agencies get involved with the technical aspects, at which time they will issue a will-serv letter or not, depending on what can or cannot be built. They do see this map, they do comment on the environmental document, and they, I think, responded to this document, but their process for their sake is to issue a will-serv letter at a later date. It's not really our process, it's something that they use to have the ability to condition projects further in addition to what you see today in the event things change. So if it's a pressure issue for Mr. Sanchez or a volume issue as far as irrigation, you're correct, that's something that he needs to work out with NID, and NID would then, if they feel it correct or appropriate, will condition the project before they issue that will-serv letter. And again, that does come out at a later, later date during the improvement plan stage. Does that answer the question?
So the will-serv letter would not be issued until they reviewed it, and they couldn't deny the service due to the fact that we've already approved this part of the map?
That's correct. They can actually impose more requirements or deny service based on what is presented during the improvement plans.
So they cannot put a shovel in the ground until that satisfies, that's correct?
Yeah, they don't get approved plans until the will-serv letters from those other entities, including Fire and Sewer, are received.
And so, as, as I understand it, really for Mr. Sanchez's benefit, that the interests that he's expressed and the concerns he's expressed will be dealt with...
That's correct.
...when you get into the details of the project and the will-serv letter. So he's gonna have every opportunity to protect his water supply.
Yes. They're not, his concern is, is a good one, and it's not uncommon, but they typically come up later when the, when the application for improvement plans are being processed.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one comment on that, Rich.
Okay.
That'd be the time to go to NID now and start working with them ahead of time, so that way you get your concerns aired with them, because they're the ones in control.
They've had very little contact with the developer.
Not so much with the developer, with NID.
I did contact NID.
Yeah, NID's the one that has control. It's, it's gonna tell the developer what to do.
Okay, any other issues or comments or a motion?
Do you want a motion?
Well, if you're ready.
Okay, I'll move the planning commission fine for approval of the tentative map, conditional use permit and variance for the 65-foot planned residential development alternative C and certify the environmental impact report for the Atwood AD subdivision based upon the following findings, recommendations, and conditions of approval, which includes the findings for SEQA, the EIR findings, along with a statement of overriding consideration, the tentative, and the tentative map findings, as well as conditional use permit, planned residential development, and I believe that's the end of it.
I think it was one item we had to make a choice on.
Yeah, there's a, I think, two, yeah, and ors.
Well, we had the park site thing, didn't we?
Yeah, we had, had that, and then the 50 to 40-foot.
I'm including the 40-foot.
And then, and then the tree mitigation, the and or on the tree mitigation.
I thought that was an option to the developer to go whichever way.
Was, was it theirs or was it ours?
Oh, I, does anyone have any feelings about it? I don't have any strong feelings.
See, Michael, I, I believe you asked us to make a choice, didn't you?
We, we were looking for a little guidance on this one.
Yeah, that's, that, I...
Either one, like I said, will meet the intent of the mitigation measure. Both of them do that. It's just a little different approach.
Could you remind us what page that was on?
Pardon me?
Could you remind us what page that was and the condition?
I'm sorry, it's on page 30 and 31. It's condition 81. It's condition 81.
I thought that was the setback thing. Condition 31, you said?
It's condition 81.
No, condition 81 on page 30 and 31.
My numbers seem to be a little different.
Rich?
Yeah.
I've got a, Mike, you, you said you're looking for.
There it is, okay.
Direction on that. I mean, as I sort of read it, one is sort of like a, a standard mitigation that anybody do and then the, on the tree part of it, and then the other one is, is where it goes to the lot buyer and is disclosed that.
Exactly, that's the main difference here. Typically, what we would do would be just acre for acre on woodland loss and then any trees greater than 24 inches, a hundred dollars an inch. And that's been pretty standard up until this point. In this case, uh, the applicant is requesting we consider an alternate approach to it, um, where under subdivision improvements, is on page 31, that the developer then would take care of the mitigation for the improvements. So any impacts as a result of the improvements would be taken care of by the developer. And then the follow-up impacts, which would be the development of the residential lots, the woodlands lost under that scenario, um, we would do the acre for acre on that and it would be divided up equally among the 65 lots and paid prior to building permit at that time.
So, so it's more of, sort of like a fee deferral a little bit for, for them?
Or pass through, whatever you want to call it, yes.
It's the same place.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there was no discussion on this before you closed the hearing, so I.
Would like to discuss it?
Wes, I request the opportunity.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the table. You want to go forward with that motion and then address?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. The impact to the, to the developer is, the first one is he pays, I, I can't quote an exact number, but it's in the area of 350 to 450,000 dollars upfront. The other one is where he pays for the impacts to the site that he does, tree-wise. And then the impacts to the lots will occur as the impacts occur. Because these are custom home lots, they're not gonna be all graded and all built like production homes. They, you know, Monteverde and, and Atwood Three and some of those other ones, there's vacant lots in there for six, eight years. And there's no impact to the trees. So it, it's, the county's gonna get the mitigation fees either way. Anyhow, that, that's why we ended up going that way. And I prefer to have both options available as we go through the project, but, you know, I wasn't aware that they were gonna say they wanted one or the other. I thought it was two options. Thank you.
Okay, well, since we really did discuss this before, I will, for this one particular item, if there's, open the public hearing if there's somebody that wants to comment on this particular item.
I guess I have a comment, a question of staff if I could, and that is, have we done this before this way? Is this a?
Part, part B is new, is fairly new. First time you've, you've considered the second part here. And Jack is right, I mean, e- either or would be fine with staff. Both of them are adequate mitigation.
So you, you would be happy with allowing them to make the decision as they, as they go through the process?
Certainly.
Okay, let me, let me close the public hearing, I didn't see any comments. Okay. Want to go forward with your motion again?
All right. I guess I'll, should I restate the motion or can I just simply pick up where I left off? I better restate it since I withdrew it. I'll, uh, go back and move that we approve this subdivision as recommended by the development review committee for a tentative map, uh, tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, variance for the 65-foot planned residential development alternative C and certify the environmental impact report, EIR for the Atwood Eighty subdivision based upon the following findings and recommendations, conditions of approval, which is the SEQA findings and the statement of overriding consideration, the tentative, tentative map, conditional use permit, planned residential development. And in those conditions of approval, there was also a change from the 40 to 50, 50 to 40-foot setback. And then there was, it was decided that the two options are gonna be left in for the tree thing. And you were gonna help me.
Uh, just a reminder that there is also variance findings that you have to make.
Oh, I just didn't get that. Okay. And the variance, okay, findings. I think that's all.
And we're not doing anything with that, that water line?
The water line, I, I suspect.
NID.
Needs a letter, will include the letter of approval from the water agency, which is between the other people. And I assume that that'll, uh, force the water agency to maintain whatever level of service or whatever they do. It's, it's in their.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, but I do have one question. What did you do on the tree since it's?
We left it so they could have a choice as they go through.
Okay. Then I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor, or are there any further discussion points?
I do have, just clarification, just wanted to make sure that we picked up the conditions that were added by the Parks Department. That was in the attack, the.
Okay.
End out. That those are included. And we did include the adjustment in the front setback from 50 to 40 feet.
Did that.
Okay. That was it.
Any other homework?
Okay, well, it sounds like we have a clear motion on the floor. And, uh, here, no more discussion from the commission. I'll, uh, call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let me see, uh, on this project, uh, the, it's subject to appeal and, uh, an appeal needs to be filed with the planning department, uh, within the next 10 calendar days. And the fee for the appeal is $495. Okay, well, thank you, folks. And at this point, we'll, uh, move forward to our next agenda item, which is the, uh. Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute break at this time? Folks, if we could have a seat, I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Okay, the next agenda item is, uh, the final environmental impact report and conditional use permit for the Hidden Falls Regional Park. And we have Lisa Carnahan here to, uh, introduce us to where we're going with this project. You're on.
Now I'm on. Uh, much better. Um, with me today are Andy Fisher from Parks Department and Deborah Bishop from EDA AECOM, the consultant. Um, the item before you is the, uh, request from the Placer County Facilities Department for a conditional use permit, um, and certification of a final EIR for the Hidden Falls Regional Park. This is the area of the Hidden Falls Regional Park. As you can see, it's west of Highway 49, north of Mount Pleasant and Weiss, and south of the Bear River. And here's Garden Bar coming along on the west side of the project. Uh, this is the original 221-acre area of the park that's currently open to the public with the existing parking lot, which, under this, uh, new conditional use permit, would be expanded. The 979 acres, which is formerly known as the Spears Ranch, would be added to the park and improvements would be made to the Garden Bar Road area prior to allowing, um, general public access into a parking lot over here. Um, little bit of background on the project. In October of 2004, the commission did approve the minor use permit and adopted the mitigated NECD for the Didion Ranch, the eastern portion of the project, the 221 acres. Um, this project combines the Didion and the Spears Ranch portion for a total of 1,200 acres. Um, the CUP, if it's approved, would supersede the original minor use permit that was approved for the existing open portion. The draft EIR for the project, um, went up for public review starting June 17th and after its 45-day period. During that time, the project entitlements were submitted by the Placer County, uh, Facilities Department. We did receive some comments on the draft EIR. Those were, uh, responded to in the final EIR, which were published December 11th. And then because of a publication error, a chapter was missing, so it was republished on January 12th. Um, during that review period process, we did take it to both the rural Lincoln and, um, North Auburn Max and they did vote unanimously to, uh, recommend approval of both the CUP and the final EIR. Um, at the planning commission hearing two weeks ago, when this was originally before you, um, you voted to, uh, postpone it to today, continue it to today, to allow for, uh, full public review of the final impact report in its entirety. Um, we did receive several comments, both verbal and written at that time. Most of the comments were in regards to the Garden Bar Road, uh, traffic safety, hunting and campfires. Um, and although we understand the concerns of the people that live in the area, there was really no new information brought forth in the comments, which would result in new mitigation measures or a change in the final environmental impact report. Some of the project features, uh, 14 new miles of trails, uh, the area of the existing parking area on Mir's Road would be expanded. Uh, and then in subsequent phases, the area on the Garden Bar side would have a parking lot, uh, constructed along with access improvements along Garden Bar Road. Uh, there'd be bridge crossings, picnic areas, fishing. Uh, some of the other things would be interpretive signage. There, we're looking, hoping on a nature education center out there, uh, group camping area, uh, possibly a disc golf area in the area of the fuel breaks. Some of the other things would be managed hunting of both legal and nuisance game animals and events up to 200 people with the existing reservation system. Um, these are just some photos of the park. As you can see, this is the fall overlook that was built. It's really nicely done. Um, these are just some of the volunteers that have, um, come out to the park to help build and maintain trails. Um, this, although it's kind of hard to see with the lights, this is the existing Mir's Ranch side parking lot, um, which would be expanded during phase one of the project. This is a map of the proposed trails. Oops, excuse me. Um, here you can see the portion that's currently open. This would be the new side that would be open. And initially, people would be coming, except for, um, classroom-sized groups that would be allowed access via this side, um, on an appointment-only basis. And the gates would be open and closed behind them. All, all the rest of the general public would be, in the first phase, coming through this side to gain access. Then in the second phase, when, uh, cars are allowed from the Garden Bar side, they would first do the improvements to the Garden Bar Road and put in the staging area, which is in this area, you see the S. Um, and then in the third stage, that's when they would bring, put more improvements to Garden Bar Road to widen it even further, um, allowing access, uh, for equestrians and horse trailers. Um, and with that, um, and the development review committee recommends that the commission approve the conditional use permit and, uh, certify the final environmental impact report based upon the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report. I'd now like to turn the presentation over to Andy Fisher. He's gonna briefly go over a few things.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
I'm going to turn my hat around from regulator in the last item to developer in this item. The Placer County Parks Division is primarily responsible for the development and operation of Hidden Falls Regional Park, 1,200-acre park owned by the citizens of Placer County, purchased by the Board of Supervisors. And there were a few items I wanted to touch on in particular. As you recall, the item was, excuse me as I learn this, the item was continued from January 14th, and one of the bright spots that came out of that, we were able to meet with some of the neighbors that we have along Mir's Road, and we heard some additional concerns, were able to talk through those, and I think we've come to at least some amicable solutions that I'll discuss. So I wanted to go through that and some of the intricacies of our phasing plan with you. To start with, as Lisa mentioned, just to go through some of the components of phasing, in our immediate phase, we would begin right after approval, when that happens, we would complete the trail system throughout the park. Today, there's about seven miles worth of trail. Ultimately, there would be about 30 miles of combined ranch road and trail to make up the entire system out there at the park. We would also attempt to develop a nature education center, which would be on the westerly portion of the park. That would be accessed by Garden Bar Road. And the access to that nature center, what we've called for in the permitting, is that in Phase One, there would be access to that nature center by classroom-sized groups, and the gates would not be left open. They would work through the Placer County Parks Division reservation system. We would be able to enforce the types of vehicles, the times that they enter and leave, and work with neighbors and so forth on those kind of conditions to regulate that entrance and exit. So in Phase One, there'd be very limited access to that western end of the park via Garden Bar Road, and limited improvements to Garden Bar Road itself. There would be entrance improvements and some other improvements to protect the Spears family property that we have an easement that runs through. But there would be that limited amount of public access, no open hours, but some limited public access to that nature center in Phase One. Also in Phase One, we propose to expand the existing Mir's parking area, and that would add another 25 parking places for automobiles and another 12, I believe, for equestrian trailers, or perhaps 12 total. If all goes well, and today, we have intact grant funding, if that stays intact and the state doesn't freeze that again, we're primarily funded for Phase One improvements, so we would expect to move forward with those immediately. Phase Two improvements, which would provide a great deal of off-site improvements to Garden Bar Road and open up a new staging area with open public hours, ungated hours, to the western side of the property versus via Garden Bar Road. We have no funding for at this point, therefore, we have no schedule for that. So we don't know how many years out that would be. It would not be immediate. We also describe in here events, when we've talked to folks like the cross-country runners, they've wanted to host events, Boy Scouts and so forth, and in talking to our engineers and the staff of the different departments, we've come upon a carrying capacity of events of up to 200 people. Beyond that, it would require an additional temporary use permit that would bring with it its own environmental review. So what we think is that the carrying capacity for these events, only hosted via Garden Bar Road in Phase Two, would carry up to 200 people. Again, no funding or schedule for that. And also in Phase Three, which would provide additional widening on Garden Bar Road to support equestrian trailers and build an equestrian staging area off of the western end of the property, we have no funding or schedule for that either. And I want to move on to some of the more recurrent comments that we've gotten in talking to the neighbors, in some of the letters and comments that we got at the January 14th hearing. There's really three categories of comments that continue to recur, roadway improvements, wildfires, and hunting. And to begin with roadway improvements, I believe I discussed Garden Bar Road improvements. We did have a comment, I recall, that said, or several comments, at January 14th, that said if you're going to allow the public into Garden Bar Road, that you need to make those improvements. We do have quite a detailed list of improvements that we will be making to Garden Bar Road prior to that public access, that general public access. More recently, we've had discussions with the folks on Mir's Lane, and some of the questions and comments they had is what's going to be going on down there? What are you going to be doing to improve Mir's Lane in the near term as you add more traffic? The widening to Mir's Lane that we performed when we opened the park to what's open now, there's the 220 acres that's open now, there's a staging area there now, parking and a restroom. We performed the improvements to Mir's Road at that point that model the improvements we would commit to in Phase Three along Garden Bar Road. So those improvements along Mir's Road are intact. There was some question about what use would be allowed there, and we clarified and committed that it's never been our intent, and it's not our intent, to ever allow public vehicle access from that Mir's Road entrance to go to the facilities on the western part of the park. So access to the nature center, any vehicle access along the NID Road, and access to reservation-based events, those would never happen at the Mir's Road entrance. They would never be supported there. So that's some level of traffic that would never enter the Mir's Road area. There's some question over the county's share of maintenance on that road and the status of the road. Mir's Road and Mir's Place are both public easements. The county pays a fair share proportion into a public road division and a zone of benefit for major maintenance of that road. As we open additional phases and introduce new traffic, the county would update the engineering report that sets that fair share proportion to the county, and so we would pay that larger share for increased traffic. As these phases come online, we would commit to that. The next major issue that we've dealt with is fire risk reduction. The county takes that very seriously, as do our neighbors. We are in the middle of spending almost $1 million in fire risk reduction measures out there between shaded fuel breaks, hydrants, underground storage tanks, and systems of that sort. So we take it very seriously. But particularly, folks have been interested in campfires out there, and I think with good reason. Originally, I don't think we described what we meant well enough, and I've included a picture up here that we got from our fire department, and we've tried to describe more particularly what we intend with campfires. It would be one or two masonry-constructed pits. They would be around the nature education center, so it would be part of that kind of council-time experience. There would be no other campfires allowed in the park. You could not go camp wherever you wanted. We would host overnight events at the nature center that could use those campfire pits. We've worked with CAL FIRE officials, and they've given us some other good guidance and regulations to use those pits. There would be 25-foot clearing setbacks. There would be a screen to go over the top in case the wind came up, and the pits would be restricted during high fire risk. And we've talked even further about that with our neighbors and said that, as opposed to in the national forest, where campfires, aside from red flag burn days, you can have campfires in pits in the national forest all year long, what we've said is that we'll work with the fire department, and we'll bookend the dry season. We will come up with a date where it gets dry and a date in the end where it begins to rain again, and we'll just simply prohibit fires during that dry season altogether. So we would commit to doing that. We'd post those times. They'd be available to the folks using the park, where there would just be a prohibition on any use of those pits during fire season. So I hope that has assuaged some legitimate fears, because fire, everybody out there realizes fire could be devastating. Hunting is the third issue that's come up very often. The Department of Facility Services, of which Parks is a division, is of the opinion that limited hunting, appropriate hunting, is an appropriate use of the park in limited measure. It serves a constituency that has very limited opportunity west of the national forests in this county, that it is large enough, but we also understand it is a public park and requires some extraordinary measures to make sure that it's safe. To that end, we would close the park. What we've proposed is two hunting seasons per year with up to 10 people each on the site at any given time. One of the commenters at the January 14th meeting correctly said that if we simply allowed hunting outside of park open hours, we'd be in violation of fish and game rules, and that's absolutely correct. We simply couldn't allow hunters out there as soon as the park closes in the evening. Our intent would be special closers, no more than twice a year, for two-day events each. Let's see, where was I going from there? In addition to that, it's the intent of the county that those would be guided events, and that everyone entering the park to hunt would have valid fish and game hunting licenses. So the restrictions that we would place on hunting would be those in addition to what fish and game would put on the property otherwise. And just briefly, some other comment letters that we got during the January 14th meeting. We did have a couple of folks who said they had traffic trying to access the park via McRanch Road, which is off of Hubbard via Bell Road. I wanted to make the point that the only two valid access points that we will support are the existing Mir's Road entrance and Garden Bar Road. We will not, as part of this permit process, we're not proposing any other entrances, none from Bell Road. If that continues to be a measure of confusion, we can work with folks and try to assuage that confusion if it's going on. I do want to make the point that I did leave my cards in the back here next to the display copy of the environmental impact report. We do know that we're going to be in the neighborhood for a long time. We want to be good neighbors, so we encourage folks to contact us. Central Valley Flood Protection Board sent us a letter to tell us that we were within their district. We received that. We'll abide by their conditions. And finally, NID, excuse me, sent us a letter with two basic concerns. One is construction oversight, pardon me again, construction oversight, making sure that we don't harm any of their facilities. They would be included in any review of improvement plans or grading plans, so they would have that oversight during that process. In addition, they were concerned about use of the canal roads as trails. The easements that created those canal access easements included some guidance on encroachment permits for use of things like trails or other items like that. So we think that we already have some guidance on how to go through their permitting process if we want to do that. I did speak with NID about that, and I believe that both of us are on the same page and have no more issues. So with that, I will close. I do know that there are members of the public that we've spoken to over the last couple of weeks that are here today.
See, Andy, I might have just a couple clarification questions, really is all there. It appears that the kind of overall philosophy for the management of this park is defined with the word passive.
Correct.
And maybe, just for all of us that may not understand, what the philosophy is guiding the long-term management of this park, what passive really means, or what type, in the recreation world?
To date, we've really defined it more by what it doesn't mean in terms of active recreation, which would mean ball fields, lighting, amplified sound, things like that. We don't have an exact definition of what passive means, and that is a topic that we would address going forward as more ideas come along.
Okay, so maybe, then carrying forward a little bit, in the decision that we're making today, you have Phase One, Two, and Three.
Correct.
Particularly Phase Three may be quite a while off before the funding becomes available for it.
I'm sorry, it may what, fall off? Is that what you said?
It may be a long time.
A long time off, yes.
Before, and so is there, this is a conditional use permit, is there a timeframe that it'd have to be renewed, or what's? All phases are included in the condition use permit, and if it's 50 years or 25 years...
That's right, and the key element of the use permit is that the allowed use would not be allowed until the corresponding improvements were made. I think a key table within the document is Table 3.1, which on the left side of the page outlines the uses. On the right side of the page outlines our commitments that we would perform before those uses were allowed. So there would never be horse trailers allowed, Phase Three uses, horse trailers allowed on Garden Bar Road to access the park until we made the road improvements that we committed to. It just simply wouldn't, the use just wouldn't happen until the improvements are made.
Okay. And then following from that, back to the definition of passive, which you'll be defining as you go along, if any more passive proposals come forward, then you would be back here with, for another condition use permit?
Potentially. I believe there's some guidance in our project description, and Lisa may have more to say about that. I'm not sure what our bounds are and what would trigger us coming back here.
You may want to come up.
In regards to your initial question about the exercise of the permit, it does say in the last condition of approval that it's considered exercised, although it's a phased project, the condition of use permit will be considered exercised upon installation of the Phase One improvements.
Okay. And so then the other part of the question is, as other ideas come along on the use of the park, that would be a separate condition use permit request?
If there's something that doesn't fall within the parameters of what's already been described, if they're not similar in context, yeah, if there's something that varies greatly, yeah, they'd need to come back for a modification of the use permit to allow other than passive things.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Andy or Lisa? Go ahead.
I have one for Andy. Is it intended that the site will be fenced in its entirety so we don't end up spitting over on the neighbor?
That's correct. We've, in some portions, will continue that as a program to maintain fences. We have a cattle lease agreement with the Spears family on the majority of the property right now, and as part of their lease agreement to maintain those fences for the time being, that runs out in 2014.
Yeah.
At which time, it would become our problem.
Okay. Any other questions?
Could we have a review of the construction improvements for Phase One on the roadways? Do we have a document for that in here?
We have a single document that shows Phase One improvements. Is that the question?
Yes.
Lisa, what would be the best place to turn to that outlines Phase One improvements only?
Condition 21.
Thank you, Condition 21.
And that's on page 64 of your agenda packet.
Should I read them? They're fairly lengthy. A number of these improvements parallel the purchase and sale agreement commitments that we have with the Spears family, so they revolve around the entrance area, improvements around the entrance area at Garden Bar Road, fencing up our easement area, where one, where two parcels removed between Garden Bar Road and our fee-owned property, so we have an easement between there. And these conditions discuss our commitments of improvement, cattle guards, fencing, and entrance improvements between Garden Bar Road and our property. Additionally, we would expand the Mir's parking area to add 25 parking places to the existing parking place and additional equestrian parking area. We've also, in this, as we do the parking improvements at the Mir's Road area, we believe that the entrance and exit there could be reconfigured to improve the circulation as it is today in sight distance, so we'll be doing that as well.
Thank you.
I have a question. It doesn't appear that the road improvements to Garden Bar for the first phase actually have anything to do with the road itself. Is that correct?
That's right.
And it's, what would be done differently for the equestrian access when you did the road improvements?
Let me start with Phase Two improvements. I could back up. Phase Two improvements widens about three miles of Garden Bar Road between our entrance and Mount Pleasant Road, widens it to 18 feet with shoulders, and it improves some vertical curves. Phase Three continues those improvements. It requires additional widening to 20 feet with shoulders and improves some of the horizontal curves for further sight distance. So that's the differentiation between Phase Two and Three.
And this is primarily for safety, is that correct?
Correct. There's, capacity really has not been the controlling issue on our traffic studies. It's been safety.
So that it's necessary, or seemed necessary, to widen the road for the horse trailers, but not for school buses? Since school buses would be accessing in Phase One?
It's currently a school bus route, as it is today, and what we've said is that through that reservation system where we can control times, we can specify sizes. We can say that no full-size school buses could be there, those kind of interactive things that we can do. can do to control it through our reservation system.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you, Andy. Okay, now we're going to open it up to public comment, and so if you kind of step forward one at a time, see, hold up a minute before you start speaking, because I guess I need to know how many people are going to comment here. Okay, so I'm going to ask you to hold your comments to three minutes, as well as if somebody has already made your point, then it really won't be necessary for you to step forward because your point will be already in the record. So also, when you step forward, identify yourself, and, okay, our first gentleman, go ahead.
My name is Eric Thompson. I live at 6600 Garden Bar Road, Lincoln, California. First, I'd like to ask that this meeting be continued to a later date because January Tuesday 26 of this week, I went into the planning department and asked for a copy of the EIR. I was told there were none available, that I was to contact Maywan Cratch the following day in order to have a copy made. This is a legal document that's open to the public, not even available to the public more than 24 hours before the hearing today. It should have been available, so I request that this be continued to a further date before any final decision is made. Now, as regard to the plan itself, I think because of the area that it's in, which is an agricultural area, the county needs to make a comprehensive plan for the complete area, all of the Garden Bar area, the Big Hill area. It states in the rough draft of the EIR that Big Hill and Country Club Lane are not part of the county road systems, and they have no response for the road at all on Garden Bar past the future entrance to the park, which is totally incorrect. Therefore, your draft EIR is incorrect, and possibly your final EIR, since that's a county road. And Big Hill Road, as well as the rest of Garden Bar Road, were offered for dedication to the county more than 30 years ago. The county hasn't accepted nor denied this offer for dedication. And if you go to the end of the county maintained road, supposedly maintained road at this time, it says end of county maintained road, not end of county road. You'll also notice that in your forms for today, that the road that would be starting for the county park entrance from Garden Bar Road would be made 24 feet wide with two-foot shoulders, asphalt the whole way. Yet the best that the county is offering to do to Garden Bar Road, the public portion of the road that's used all the time, is to make it 20 feet wide, if it's consistent with the area and not taking out rock, outcroppings, or anything else. Yes, I have no problem with the park, I have a problem with the county's attitude towards the people that live out that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next speaker.
My name is Gary Matavy. I live at 5500 Blue Oak Ranch, just adjacent to the park. Actually share a common fence with the proposed expansion of the park. I have a letter that I'd like to leave with you, but I'll summarize that in the interest of time. I was part of the group that met with Mr. Fisher regarding some of the potential mitigation for fires and for hunting, and there's an area that I do not believe has been properly addressed. The letter that I'm going to submit also has the signatures of over 20 people that live in the area. The fundamental issue that has not been addressed is that is one of safety. The current conditional use permit in the EIR allows for hunting for 20 people during park closure up to our fence lines. There's people in this room that have about a mile or a little bit more than a mile's worth of common fence with the park, and the permit would allow people basically to my fence line to be able to shoot high-powered rifles and hunt. We happen to have children, grandchildren, homes, livestock, domestic animals, just on the other side of the fence. So I don't understand how safety has been mitigated from that sense. We discussed potentially limiting the use of certain firearms and certain weaponry, that was denied or at least ignored. We talked about potential bow-only hunting, that was also ignored. And so we're back down to a document that talks about basically high-powered rifles to shoot any legal game within the park boundaries, which happens to be a shared boundary with us. Somebody asked a question, I think Mr. Stevenson asked a question about fence line. The fence line that was referred to is actually a 100-year-old fence line, which is commonly cut. Mr. Spears actually is grazing cattle next to my property, and his cattle always get in my property, and he routinely cuts my fence to get through and retrieve his cattle. The fence line is totally inadequate for any sort of containment for livestock and/or people. You're welcome to go out and look at it there. I am unaware of any plans to do any improvement to the fence line across that, the edge of the park. The second part is, we talked about park closure, and yet we talk about the use of hunting or hunting for 20 people, and so I really am confused as to how 20 people take priority over the 340,000 Placer County residents that won't be able to use that park that day, and how those 20 people have precedence and priority over the safety of those of us that legally own property there and legally have the right to use all of our property up to and including the fence line. So we have not gotten any response as to any of those questions. The people that have signed this and the people that are here today really look for the commission to prohibit all hunting within Hidden Falls Regional Park. It's clearly not a depredation issue, it's clearly not an issue of thinning the deer herd, it seems to be a very limited use for a very special interest group. So in summary, I think that, you know, our request is that you do the sensible thing and prohibit all hunting, to as not endanger the county residents that live adjacent to the park.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Skip Outman, and just, I'll be very brief, but I represented most of the people who bought the properties of Blue Oak, and I represented Jim Diddy and Paul Aronovitz and Dennis Meyer when they sold that property, and we graded the conservation easement, and I was in most of the meetings with the county when the park was created, or at least the first part of it. So I've been involved in this since the inception. I've had, over the last month, many phone calls from my friends and clients at Blue Oak who are very concerned about the hunting, somewhat about the fire too, but they have homes, as Gary just said, very close to the park, sometimes not just on the other side of the fence, but the exposure to the hunting ranges beyond what Gary said. It ranges on the east to Hubbard, on the west, all the way to Garden Bar. Marty and Jeff Snyder have called me there, they live near Garden Bar, but they have property contiguous to the park. They are extremely concerned about their safety and the safety of their livestock if hunting with rifles is permitted. I've worked with Andy Fisher for a long time, and I have a lot of respect for him, but I have to disagree that the park is big enough. I mean, he said it's big enough. It is big enough to contain the hunters, not big enough to contain the bullets. And the only other point, well, two other points. One is the deprivation, I think that should be held by the professionals, the trappers, the fish and game, the people who know what they're doing. They can do the deprivation on the wild pigs much more safely than the public. And the other thing is, when the whole thing was created, there was a conservation easement on it. The spirit of that conservation easement was to maintain the vegetation, the herder jokes, and the wildlife, and when the people bought their property there, they were buying it with the understanding that they were not to shoot the wildlife. Anyhow, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Randy Martin. I have a company called Trailscape. I live at 321 Gray Street in Auburn. I speak nationally on behalf of Trails and the value additive Trails, Urban Land Institute and International Mountain Bike Association and Trail Symposium and so forth. Primary point is the Trails add value. And two surveys that were done, both of them by a company called American Lives, Brooke Warwick, one of them had to do with what amenities people want in their communities. This was for a development, this was a development survey. Eighty-two percent said they wanted trails where golf and such were down in the 22% range. Another one was done last year specifically for a Caribbean resort where they were asking Americans what kind of amenities they wanted in a resort in Caribbean. Ninety-three percent wanted trails, and only 87% wanted ocean beaches. So just to give you a sense of the popularity nationally and locally for trails, and those are an indication of the incredible value that these trails will add to the neighboring community as opposed to what might be some concerns about safety and so forth. So that wraps it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Hogginsmit, Newcastle. Just wanted to compliment county parks staff for a well-written EIR and CUP. They've addressed most all issues that I can see in there. I'm impressed with the Trails plan, and looking forward to moving forward and getting some of the Trails built. Have been very active with them, doing volunteer work, and look forward to bringing the public out and doing some volunteer labor to help get the project, or get the park online and get people out there using it. The public is definitely looking forward to the expansion of the park, and that includes working with the Placer Land Trust to the north. I realize that's independent of this use permit, but we definitely look forward to the Trail connections out to the north, but I realize also that it's outside of this use permit. But there's a lot of great stuff that's going to go on out there, and really look forward to moving forward on it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Clark Smith. I live in Lincoln Hills, and I just would like to encourage the commission to accept the conditional use permit and the certification of the environmental report. Our residents there have formed both a hiking club and a biking club, and in addition a sales, excuse me, in addition a trails building committee. So we've done some trails there, excuse me, and all of our residents use the area extensively. I'm also a member of the county trail forum, which is formed by the Parks Department, and we've reviewed the planned trails and are in favor of the extension of the park in order to give a better experience for both hikers and bikers. Again, I urge you to vote yes on the conditional use permit and certify the environmental report.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Gordon Ainsley. I live in Mid-Ofist. I'm also on the Auburn Recreation and Park District Board of Directors. Many years ago, there was a settlement between the county and ARD that it was decided that 75 to 80% of mitigation monies would go to ARD in Recreation District Five. This differs quite a lot from that. But let me just say, I think it's a wonderful project. I absolutely want it to go forward, and everything that we have surveyed, every time we have surveyed, meaning ARD has surveyed, our constituents, they want trails more than anything else by far. And so I think this is a wonderful project. What I would like is that when this variance from that typically 75 to 80% is used, and we don't want to, personally, I don't want to see those grants missed. I don't want to see this not happen. But as soon as this is over with, I would like that to immediately be start paying back, so to speak, on mitigation monies. That that be an understanding of the county rec departments, that they would immediately start paying that back as mitigation monies come in. Now, in terms of, I don't, I'm not going to take a stand on hunting, but I want to make you aware that there are some options that you probably don't know about. I have a friend who lives in Maryland, he works for the government in a kind of high-level secret thing, and he's a hunter. And he hunts in Rock Creek Park and other parks in the DC area. They only allow shotguns, and they'll only allow hunting from elevated stands and trees, so that the shooting is always done down, and so there's no chance of, you know, shooting at a deer and hitting a livestock animal or something like that. Also, of course, there's archery. So I just want to make you aware, I'm not taking a stand on whether you should or shouldn't have hunting, but I want you to make that, you're aware that those options do exist.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dee Meredith, and I live here in Auburn at 2545 Frontier Road, and I average two days a week, weather permitting, horseback riding. And I cannot tell you how wonderful it is to meet the people out there riding, picnicking, families, trail riding, biking, and everybody. We urge you to say yes on this. We all enjoy that out there, and we're waiting for our Trails. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Dembraski, Loomis Basin Horsemen, representing about 200 and some folks. I've also been on the trail forum with parks and have been out to both sides of the park, the new section, and ridden it, and it is just really lovely, and really, we do highly recommend that this is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Andrews. I lived on Gold Hill Road in Newcastle, approximately five miles from the existing Hidden Falls Regional Park. I'm here to express my support for the expansion of the park. I'm an avid trail user. Trails in Placer County are very important to me. I've used the Trails at the existing park many times. I volunteer for trail maintenance, and I think it's a, I urge you to support this conditional use permit. I think the mitigation measures in the EIR and the expansion through Phase One, Two, and Three adequately address the concerns of the people in the area, and I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Gabler. I live on Mears Drive, and I would like to say that the hunting is a number-one situation that I really oppose, mainly because one of my windows already has a bullet hole in it from the park area. So I would like that to be opposed. And also, I have concern about the overburdening of the roadway, the private roads that increase to 774 cars on a weekend. That's quite a bit overburdening, considering it's 300 and something now. And also, as far as the campfires go, that would be okay. Andy has showed pictures of that being pretty good, and as long as there's adequate liability and medical insurance in case someone is burned. And also, I would like to suggest that if you approve this anyway, that you put in a turnaround on the Spears Ranch at the Garden Bar access that could be used for people that have horses, that drop them off with their kids for riding, so they have a place where they can turn their trailers around, just make a big turnaround. And that should take care of that. That'd probably cut down our traffic a little bit on Mears Drive. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do I request something, or does this start automatically?
Just give us your name and go forward.
Terry Byers. I have a lot out at Hidden Falls Park. We look forward to, or actually, Blue Oak Ranch, which is right next to the park. I look forward to living out there. We've made use of the Trails, and I think consistently today, you're hearing that everybody loves the Trails, and we do, and we're looking forward to the expansion. Let's be smart about it. Let's do the Trails, let's do what people want. People want the Trails, they want the hiking, they want the equestrian. It's a beautiful park. I just don't understand how hunting makes sense. I don't know the process of this final EIR phase, but is there a way you can approve this in part and leave some of it up to further investigation? I don't know how hunting makes sense other than to whatever special interest group it is that wants this. So I would urge you, if there's a way to put part of this aside for further discussion, let's do it, but let's go forward with the Trails. Let's go forward to a beautiful nature park that we can all safely enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marlene Montan. I live on Mears Drive. And before making any decisions today, I would like you very much to take the time... And before making any decisions today, I would like you very much to take the time to table this for a very short time and meet with the title companies, hopefully one of our group and hopefully Andy. There is some real question about Mir's Place. Unless Mir's Place is a county road, and not just a dedicated road, but a road that was accepted by the county as a county road, and unless every property along Mir's Place, when they gave the easement, also signed on that road maintenance and the agreement to dedicate it to the county, you can't do this. It is impossible. According to the title company, they will put up the attorneys to fight you when you say yes. And you, and you don't wanna come back to us and say, "Now, you people, you're gonna have to take your tax dollars and help us fight what we made a mistake on." That's called overburdening. You can never add a piece of property to an easement if it's a private easement. So, I think you need to sit and, and all of us sit down with the title company and get a true meaning on it. I, I have one comment from the title company and he has another from an attorney. So, I, I think this is something that should be discussed before you make a decision. The other is the hunting. I'd like to see if you go ahead with it, that you hold all of the property owners anywhere in the area what's called a hold harmless agreement. That means if any bullet goes into our yard, if anybody is shot on our properties, if any damage is done, the county will be responsible. They will take the responsibility. When we get sued, they will hire the attorneys. They will, if there's damage, they will pay for the damage. If this hunting is so safe, then please, for all of us, we would like a home, a hold harmless agreement. And I know your attorneys can write that. And my only other quick comment is not for us that are down lower on mirrors, up above the back people. I'd like to, I'm worried about in a fire, if you have five to seven-hundred cars coming out or four-hundred cars coming out during a fire and fire engines going in, there is no way those people above us can get out. And it's something that I think you need to drive out and actually see for yourself and hopefully find some other, other way, at least for them out in case of a fire. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Ron Spears. I'm part of the Spears family and I'm glad to see this is going forward. Hopefully, it does. The purpose of selling the property to the county was to make it for an area for people to go and enjoy. But we were pretty explicit when we sold that property that we didn't want any hunting on that property. We've done very, very, very limited hunting on that property since we've owned it. Very explicit that that was one of the things of going out to that park was for the wildlife and all the different stuff out there. So, the, the hunting thing is a big issue and I also own some property out there. I can't understand why we would have to enter into this hunting thing. It's just not what the Spears family thought originally. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Shigley. I live at 2500 Mount Pleasant Road and I'm concerned about the roads, the roads heading out to this new proposal. I think there will be a significant increase along Crosby-Herald Road from Wise Road or from Mount, from Garden Bar to, from Wise to Garden Bar. Those roads need to be improved and there will be, when you go down onto Crosby-Herald Road, which, what way is designated for all the hundreds, if not thousands, of people coming from Lincoln to access this area? I see, I see no access. Is it from Wise Road? Is it Crosby-Herald? Is it, or is it Gar, is it Garden Bar? Which one is it? Nobody knows?
You'll have to address the commission, if you could, please.
The commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Which access from all the hundreds, if not thousands, of people from Lincoln, how will you access the Hidden Falls project?
Okay, that's-
From Wise Road?
Yeah, we, we understand your question and we'll, we'll do our best to get it answered.
Okay. Are you, okay, then, when you go down Crosby-Herald Road, it is a rough road. It is, it should have a reduced traffic speed limit. At the bridge, there are no turnouts. There are no, no parking signs. As you travel up around the corner, it is a potentially unsafe situation with, with large vehicles. And as you turn around the turn onto Mount Pleasant from Crosby-Herald, there's limited visual sighting for large, over forty-foot vehicles for me leaving out of my driveway. And on the way back, heading back, the visual on the bridge from, from Crosby-Herald and Big Bend down to the creek is limited visual. It's a twenty-five mile zone and people drive too fast on the road. Also, with road trash. Road trash is way too much and I don't feel that this, the, the readings for the decibel increase and the amount of average traffic count is correct. And I think it needs to be explained better when it was taken because it says in average traffic. So, what time was it taken and how adequate will that be? And your, your net change seems so insignificant. If it's more than what is stated, if it becomes more what it is stated, is that a concern?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Shirley Shrunke. I live at sixty-four oh-one Garden Bar, which is about two pieces of property past this proposed area. Very recently, our possibility to split or further improve our land was taken away by the restrictive zoning that you people approved, and that was allegedly for conservation purposes. To make these extreme changes in our local environment is totally contradictory to that. Also, just past the area where this park is proposed, the, the road is very narrow and there's very little way that it can be widened. It's mostly dirt road and there's no turnarounds. So, if somebody goes past that bridge with a huge trailer, they're gonna have to take out my pond or somebody's fence to turn their trailer around. So, and the main thing that most of these people here are upset about is the hunting and the horse trailers. So, but, but like I was saying, as far as not being able to turn around, also, if there's a fire, which we did have a forty-acre fire a couple of years ago, and there's no way to get out. So, it, and that's about a mile from us and there's a lot more people up there. So, it's, it's a huge issue.
Okay, thank you. Are we at the end?
Hi, my name is Rex Manner. I live at three fourteen Robey Drive, Auburn, and I've lived in this area for decades and used the trails for all kinds of purposes for decades. And I'm all for more trails, but this hunting issue is insanity and that needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is that the last public comment? Okay, I guess I'll-
I'll say, I'll, I'll say one thing.
Okay.
I wasn't planning to speak. My name's Andrew Scott and I live near the property as well. My concerns are fiscal in nature with the county having a sixteen-million-dollar budget shortfall for next year going forward with this project. Although I think it's a worthwhile project, I don't think this is the time. I won't elaborate further because I think that is an issue that needs to be addressed further down the road when they start allocating money. However, I will say that hunting has been a part of Plaster County for a long time. While I'm not a hunter or haven't been for several years, I don't see an issue with that on this piece of property. So, I'd just like to add that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, go ahead and close the public comment. And Andy, would you like to assume the microphone and-
Mr. Chairman, if I could add just one comment that was made by Mr. Thompson relating to the availability of the EIR. We have just confirmed that there is a hard copy available at the front counter. There, the EIR is on, online on our website. There is CDs available upon request and that paper copies of the EIR were available at the Auburn Library and the Lincoln, Lincoln Public Library. So, they, they are available.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any specific-
Oh, I just wanted to give you an opportunity if there was something that you wanted to specifically address at this time.
Sure, let me cover a couple of things, starting from the most recent, Mr. Scott's comment about budget fiscal issues. The majority of the funding for the phasing that we're undertaking right now is through, through statewide bonds and grants, so it doesn't affect the county general fund for the portions that we're undertaking right now primarily. There is a relatively small percentage of county general fund money in that. You've heard a lot about hunting, as have we, and I would, I would suggest a couple of different, a couple of different things. Mr. Matevi was correct as he stood up here and I felt bad. There was one of the provisions that we discussed that I passed over in my original presentation, and that was the prohibition of the use of centerfire rifles. That was one of the things we discussed and our department said that we would agree to that, the prohibition of centerfire rifles. The other was the use of, the provision of a guide, that each of the people hunting on the property would be, would be accompanied by a, by a qualified guide approved by the county. If you felt that hunting was still a, a valid use and a, and a correct use of the site, we'd like to regulate it, you know, as much as we could to be sure it's safe. If it's not an integral use of the, the park, we would look to your guidance in that regard.
Oh, I, I closed the public hearing already, sir.
Are you arguing what you said?
Well, the public hearing is closed right now.
Depending on which way you wanted to go on hunting, I do have some, some language that I think we could incorporate. In regard to Mr. Ainsley's comments, as a member of the, the board of the Auburn Rec District Board, referring to the use of park dedication fees at this site, park dedication fees are collected at the time of building and the process of county apportionment as that they are recommended by our County Parks Commission and then apportioned by the Board of Supervisors. So, it's just, it's not part of the package before you today and we will be continuing conversations with Mr. Ainsley and his board and on the use of those funds.
Rich, I've, I've got a couple of questions.
Well, let's let him go ahead and finish first and then with his, and then we'll bring it back to us and, and then we can ask more questions.
Mrs. Montana mentioned a question of the status of Mir's Place and Mir's Lane in regardant to a, to a concept of overburden. We appreciate her bringing that to our attention. We have had time to look at it and we're, we're confident that the status as public road easements gives us the, the clearance to do what we're proposing to do today. It wouldn't have an effect on our use permit or environmental document.
Okay. Is that it for now?
Yes, sir.
I think we may have some more questions, but at this point, I want to bring it back to the commission and from that, we can go forward, gentlemen, with questions and discussion.
Okay, I, I had one because another issue came up with fences-
Yes.
-and existing fences and stuff. And I understand unless it was a chain-link eight-foot fence, it's not gonna keep people from crossing onto personal property. Do you have signage that's put at intervals on the fences stating that, you know, beyond this point, it's private property?
We do. Our staff has gone out and, and placed signage out there, although I'm, I'm a little remiss right now to tell you intervals or, or wording. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Any windows phase two come into play, how many years down the line, phase two?
Well, phase two, we, we don't have a schedule for because we haven't sought funding for it. In today's economic climate, we expect that, you know, future grant opportunities will be delayed and we don't know how long. Phase one funding, well, as, as you see up there, our optimistic goal would be to get trails open in late 2011 if the funding remains intact.
Okay, would it make it any sense then to hold off on the hunting until phase two comes online or we have an opportunity to discuss it further?
Well, we wouldn't come back to this commission for phase two. We would be able to progress as we've outlined in the documents. We could progress from phase one to two to three provided that we made the improvements we commit to. So, I think hunting needs to be addressed on the face today. There wouldn't be another opportunity here at the commission to do it.
So, we can condition it so that there'll be no hunting until such time?
That would be an option that the commission-
Yes, yes, okay.
I, if, if I may, Andy?
Yes.
For the hunting, I've heard it's more for control, you know, of, say, overpopulation of deer, pigs and, and stuff. Is there, and you're proposing basically two hunts a year. Is it necessary, is, say, if fish and game or county trapper said, "Okay, pigs are overrunning, they're starting to destroy the natural habitat" or whatever, we have to eliminate some of them? Is, is that brought into these hunts? I mean, when I looked at what you proposed and what it is, it sounds like it's more control, animal control than it is for hunting.
The hunting for legal game provision that we've asked for is more to serve the constituency. In any event, and in conversations I've had with folks with concerns over hunting, I think everyone agrees that there is a potential deprivation problem out there and that alleviating that through the use of deprivation permits through fishing game staff or the county trapper is really not an issue. We would ask that that provision be, be left in no matter what happens with any hunting of other legal game.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just as a comment, I mean, personally, I'd like to see the hunting provision left in. Fish and game already heavily regulates distances from residences, from property lines and from everything else relating to, to neighboring and hunter safety and that kind of thing. Hunting is legal on the surrounding parcels and the property in the area throughout the county, assuming that those same setbacks can be met. Parks is already talking about further restricting the hunters with regards to guides and the type of rifle or they can or cannot use, the type of firearm they can use. It sounds to me like this is even, you know, it's already gonna be more heavily restricted than a neighboring property owner who has enough property to hunt on, you know, would be subject to.
Okay, yeah, the, please, please leave it to the commission to discuss this now. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Yeah, I, one comment you made earlier was that no centerfire ammunition was to be used. Is that just a suggestion or was that, is that incorporated into your-
That's an agreement that we said that we would make to the, to the neighbors when we met with them. The language that I, that I used was the use of centerfire rifles by members of the public hunting and the park property shall be prohibited. We would commit to that as a department, whether you wanted to formalize that or not would, would be up to you and the conditions.
That would, I, I think if we're gonna, if that's the case, we might just as well, well, I guess not. I was gonna say it'd probably be better to use bow and arrow hunting than, than that. I don't know. Because that would limit you to, say, twenty-twos or maybe some shotguns.
Right.
And I'm not sure you're doing a favor because you made you end up harming more animals and letting them suffer and run away than you are if you can't have a clean kill. And so, I, I, I think if, if that were the case, I would rather downgrade to bow and arrow hunting and fishing game or whatever as a, at least a starting point. And then if, if we have to upgrade it sometime in the future, move up to regular ammunition. But if we already have that prohibition built in, I'm, I'm not sure it's a good situation because I just don't think hunting a, a large pig or a deer with a twenty-two is, is the thing to do.
Fishing game already restricts that.
Yeah, yeah, there's no rimfire for, for those size animals.
Well, okay.
I'd, I'd say, and it's, if we move forward with this, if, if it was conditioned, that it would be a shotgun. So, that way, at least it would be something that's appropriate for the size of animals that be-
Well, I could, I could leave a shotgun and archery.
I don't see that there's enough benefit to outweigh the liability of shooting around here. I'm totally opposed to the hunting in any form there, just the rest of the commission knows.
Well, I, if I owned property out there, I'd be in the same position these folks are. I don't want any hunting. I don't want someone shooting across my fence. I don't care how much property I have. I could have children, grandchildren- They could have children, grandchildren, or somebody else that out there just playing around.
How much, is there any financial benefit to these hunting's?
They would be fundraisers. We expect to, uh, raise between perhaps five and ten thousand per year.
With the sixty million, but nevermind.
There's enough other property in Placerville County to go hunting on. I don't know why we have to open this up.
I agree.
So, it seems like this is one issue, uh, that, should we address this separately?
Yeah, I thi- I think we can address it separately. Is there any other, I'd see if any other?
Yeah, would we like to address it now, with somebody making a motion?
I'll make a motion, we take out the hunting, period.
Second.
I propose some language in that regard to you, if you wanted to make that motion.
Just take it out, Andy. Except for that one.
Could I propose this? Uh, hunting is prohibited on the project property other than is allowed by a valid deprivation permit?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion on this issue?
Well, I guess we can always come back and amend this if, if we have, if we find out we, it needs to be broadened some. I, I hate to see us get so restrictive, but I think, I think maybe because of the pressure from the neighbors, I guess it's acceptable.
Well, that's why I threw, uh, phase two, wait until then, but, um, I have the motion now, so.
Well, just comment on, on that, because I have property out there, and I understand their, their concerns, you know, having strangers out there, but, um, Jeff made a comment, you know, everybody has the right on their property to, to go out and shoot if, if they want to, and I've had the problem of people shooting across and stuff, but being a hunter, I've gone out on my property and, and shot, and there's not a lot of areas to do it. And if it's, if it's in a controlled environment like that, if it's restricted to certain, certain types of firearms or, or bows, even the one comment where instead of, um, stalking, where it was maybe bystand, where a guide went out there and put a person in a tree and shooting down and everything, I think that, that mitigates all the, the problems of the, the neighbors. It's just, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm a hunter, and I just see so many restrictions coming down, and I'm sure there's probably ones out there that are opposed to it because it's near their property, but I'm sure that they enjoy going out hunting and stuff, and it's, and it gets so, so restrictive, and if a person's a non-hunter, they're, you know, doesn't matter what, what rights, and that's.
My, my comment to that would simply be that I, I understand that position and, and private property rights to shoot on your property is one thing, if this is not private property, this is public property, and it benefits the community, and most of the community is against it, so my decision would still stand to remove it.
Let me see, Harry?
Let's go for a vote.
Let me ask a question before we talk for the vote. What was the benefit that you were seeing by delaying this to phase two?
See how things went? I don't know how far off phase two is. Are we going to see an overabundance of animals out there again? I just don't think it's a good idea.
I think you can kind of separate the issue of the public hunts from the deprivation in a way, although that would supplement the deprivation. We would handle deprivation through deprivation permits, working with fish and game and, and working with, uh, with, uh, our county trapper in any event. So it's not, it's not a provision intended to curb deprivation in itself.
Why don't I have a problem with that? I just don't, I have a problem with people out there shooting across property lines.
Okay, well, uh, is there any other comments from the commission on this?
Well, I, I could, I, I could be satisfied with the shotgun and the, and the arrow hunting if, if that was the worst-case scenario, but, uh, maybe, maybe what, to follow along with his thoughts is, maybe that should be a consideration at phase two status and have, uh, for the time being, no hunting, and then arrow and, or archery and, and shotguns permitted at phase two, if, uh, programs.
There's a motion. Would you, would you be willing to amend your motion?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd amend the motion for that.
Well, just so I understand that, does that?
Bows and arrows.
Would not be, would not be allowed, it would be reconsidered at phase two.
At phase two.
Reconsidered, not definite that it would happen, we just, we would reconsider it.
Would that mean you come back to the commission at phase two to, uh?
Yeah.
Consider. I think so, yeah. But it's his motion, I don't want to tell him what to do.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well.
So the motion would be to curb hunting until phase two, at which time we would consider bows and shotguns? Okay?
Yeah.
Mickey?
Clerk of聴聽.
For, for clarification on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Right now, the way the use permit is structured, uh, this is the only public hearing, um, for the project. Um, phase two is a, a set of improvements that need to occur before other areas of the park opens up, so at this point, there would be no further public hearing. So maybe it could be incorporated into phase two for, um, the improvements.
A public hearing at that time?
Yeah, well.
No, no, and to clarify what Paul is saying, at this point with the use permit, there's no mechanism to bring this back when phase two rise to this commission or any other hearing body for a public review.
So it'd be a, if we worded it, it would be a discretionary on the part of the county at that time, was that what you're saying?
Right, you know, what you could do is you could decide that no hunting for the time being, that you put a condition that says, there shall be no hunting in the park. The applicant can come back, maybe you can provide direction that the applicant, that you may consider, um, reviewing that again, so the applicant, at their own discretion, come back at a future date to modify that condition to allow for hunting, and that could be with phase two, phase three, or fifteen years down the road. So you could, you could go that way.
Well, I'll change the motion then, too. Eliminate all hunting at this time.
If I, if I might, your original motion, as I read it, would apply, I believe, in this case, that would say hunting is prohibited on the project property other than is allowed by valid deprivation permit?
Okay, all righty.
Okay, Mickey, are you, uh, back to, uh, agreement?
That's the same.
Yeah, we're back to the original.
Back to the original.
My original stance.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no, no necessity then as part of the motion to state that if other types of hunting is gonna be permitted in the future, that it come back for reevaluation?
If you wish to amend the use permit, to have it come back for review, you may do so. The current motion that's before the commission for a vote doesn't state that, but there's no reason you can't, if you wish, provide for, um, as Paul said, in phase two, phase three, ten years from now, that, uh, for example, the applicant may, may request modification of the permit for hunting, or, uh, five years from now, this will return for hunting. It, what we're saying is, right now, the way this is fashioned, as well as, as your motion, there's no mechanism to bring it back for a public review.
Yeah, but on that, if Andy decided two years from now, on his own, to bring something back, uh, you know, for a use permit, he can, he can do.
Absolutely. Any, any applicant can bring back a modification of use permit.
Okay.
And that would go through a notice public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, or go through the whole thing. I, I don't know what side of the vote I end up on, but I guess we just need to vote it up or down and do, do what we.
Okay, so the motion and the second on the table is to, uh, to no hunting, and then, uh, basically if the applicant, which would probably be the county in this case, if future sees a need to bring this back, then, uh, you would have that option at your discretion. And, uh, so with that, I'll call for the question, and I think on this one, we probably were gonna go to a roll call vote.
Mr. Savison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Crab?
Yes.
Mr. Brennall's absent. Mr. Denio?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Would it two?
Okay, uh, you know, I don't see anybody from engineering here. I was kind of hoping we could get maybe some explanation of road standards. Oh, okay, there you are, okay. Maybe road standards, as well as, uh, I know the Mir's Road seems to be an issue there with existing use, so you might explain some of the road standards that go with both the mirrors and what you would plan with the Garden Bar Road. And also, I heard a comment that addresses actually all the roads down in that area, and I don't know if we can really deal with that, but maybe you can, uh, respond a little bit to the, that comment that came up about, I heard Wise Road and Kevin Stallman and...
Okay, well, I'm going to, uh, have Andrew Gaber come up here in a second. I'll get, I'll get the ball rolling for him.
Okay.
He's with EPW, and he can probably do a more comprehensive look at this project, but I can tell you that the conditions require a plate R3, which is standard for on-site for any private, um, development. That's the minimum, and that would be twenty-four feet with two, two-foot shoulders. Um, as for the improvements to Garden Bar, it was, uh, negotiated, um, and I'm gonna have Andrew speak to all that, but there was a, a very in-depth safety, um, study done by SOMAS to figure out what the minimum requirements would be needed for different levels of traffic, and what was feasible and what was not, because there's a lot of constraints on Garden Bar, and no one argues that there's a lot of, um, current restrictions, you know, line of sight and things like that. Um, so there's a long, long process with a very in-depth report done on access along there. Um, right now, I think Andy did a good job of reviewing what's required at each phase, but basically, um, there's no requirements right now for phase one, um, 'cause there's no regular public access. Um, at phase two, when there's regular public access, we are requiring, um, the fire safe minimum, which would be eighteen feet with two one-foot shoulders, I believe, could be two-foot, I'd have to look at the condition. Um, and then at the final phase with the horse trailers, we do require, um, the very minimum county standard road, which is a plate R1, which is twenty feet of pavement with two two-foot shoulders. Um, as for going beyond Garden Bar, I might defer to An- uh, Andrew Gaber on that.
Okay.
Do you have any?
See, and, and Mir's Road is, what's the standard, are, you say it's R3, Mir's Road? Now, currently?
Uh, uh, Mir's, you know, currently as it exists?
Yeah.
Um, it's detailed, it, it goes in and out. Um, people who live up there can probably tell you it gets pretty skinny.
And there's no proposal to change anything with Mir's Road?
Not right now, not with phase one.
Or phase two?
No, with phase two, it would be a minimum eighteen-foot road.
Okay.
It's a fire safe standard.
I, I have, I have one question on that, though. This is based on minimums and on traffic volumes, right? For, on, on your study?
Traffic volumes are, are looked at, yes, the, the safety study that SOMAS did.
Right.
Right.
So it's, it's to minimums, and I didn't see in, in there where maybe down the road after phase three goes in within a, a year after a traffic study that might show that traffic meets those minimum standards and everything's fine, but do you, you know, I'm just wondering if need to put a condition in there that says, okay, if you do a traffic study and more traffic comes up to where, you know, it causes maybe a step up in that part of the roadway? Because I, I honestly don't know what, you know, looking at it, what their traffic numbers and what they said say, the minimum for, the minimum standards that you're talking about.
Right, right. Um, I'm not sure, I have a good answer for you there.
Does it make sense what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying, that, that traffic safety is always a concern. We have lots of growled roses that are like that.
Putting a trigger in there that if the traffic volumes that you're facing your studies and stuff on, if that's exceeded, then?
Well, I would see.
More improvements down the road.
More improvements down the road would require for them to come back through, and , um, the DRC would take a look and decide if further environmental review would be required. Environmental review is when we look at traffic studies as far as what a project is required to do on a public road. So I would say that everything proposed in this has been looked at in the environmental document, and it's been appropriately conditioned, and should they want to do phase four, phase four has not been looked at, we don't know what it would be required, and at that time, we would look at if a traffic study was necessary. Does that make sense?
I guess what I'm maybe hearing.
I think, I think is what I'm saying, though, if the traffic on those roadways exceeds the traffic that's been modeled, does that improve? Maybe.
Yeah, help us out.
The, the park would have to be incredibly successful, and they'd have to expand their parking spaces, their parking lots by a hu- huge amount, to get to a point where we would have enough traffic on Garden Bar Road to make them widen it further. Um, current standards would call, we, we go by level of service, okay? So level of service A for this type of a road, um, three hundred and twenty cars per day, B is nine sixty, C is sixteen eighty, and currently, um, I had that here a moment ago, we're, we're, we're running two sixty on that route, the daily volumes. So we're still at level service A. You, you'd have to have, for us to get to the point.
I'm just saying, at, at phase, you know, by phase three, where it's a rough build-out, what?
If, if we had.
What's the traffic?
The, the traffic at phase three is, we're estimating it's around four to five hundred cars a day, so you're still at a level of service well and low below B, and so that's what, you, you would have a problem with, you're not have, you wouldn't have enough parking spaces, you wouldn't have the capacity at the park to get us to a point where we would need, where we would say the park needs to improve Garden Bar Road further.
Okay, I, I think you answered it on that, that basically you're, you sort of overbuilt the final phase.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to do.
Our standard, you know, it's been called out several times, that our, our ultimate standard for that road is a thirty-two-foot wide pavement, but we just don't see that this park is gonna generate that much traffic, that we need to go to that, that standard. Additionally, you start getting to something like that wide of a road through there, and what we find with these place, with a lot of these urban roads or rural roads is that as soon as you get more than twenty feet of pavement, all of a sudden, we get all sorts of speeding complaints, because you've now got this nice wide road, and, you know, people go fast, 'cause they feel safe on it, and so we're always walking this, you know, narrow line, that you want to provide a, a safe road for people to get there, but you don't want to make it so wide that people start speeding, and we have other associated problems.
Let me see, uh, I guess it kind of raises a question in my mind now. Uh, this proposal here has a one, two, three phase, and you've identified, uh, the traffic service levels and the improvements that are gonna be made in each of those phases. So as you move through time, and, uh, it becomes apparent that for whatever reason, whether it's the park or other, uh, properties out there that have increased the traffic on that road, that it wouldn't be the park at that time that would bring forward, it would be, uh, the county, right, that would basically?
Right.
Be just responding to the road needs out in the area. And so then, that kind of gets down to, uh, we, we heard Kevin Stallman mentioned, and Wise Road and other roads out in the area. So that would be true for those roads, too.
Correct.
It would be if the county determines that there's a, a safety issue.
And, and the, the park district has part of their proposal, will be paying traffic impact fees.
Okay.
Okay, so that goes into, you know, the district's funds for this area, and, um, we've been asked about the bridge on Garden Bar Road. That's on our list of deficient bridges, and as we get enough funding, we go through and we improve the bridges, and I'm sure Crosby Herald is probably on that same list. And again, as we get funding, we go through and we widen these roads and we improve them.
Okay. Let me see, back to Mirers Road now. I guess I was hearing that that road is variable width. And, you know, some of the folks are saying, well, you know, we can't get fire trucks down it and those types of things. But we don't really have anything planned, it sounds like, to address Mirers Road, or maybe we do, I don't know.
Well, having driven Mirers Road yesterday, from, at least from Mount Vernon up to the park, it looks like a consistent at least eighteen to twenty-foot width to me. So that's why I'm not certain as to what, and maybe Andy?
Yeah, just gonna clarify, when this question came up early on in our document preparation, we did go out and we took measurements all along Mirers Road and Mirers Place, and there is a minimum of twenty-foot of pavement out there. So we did verify that.
And so at least with this and the expected traffic in, in the upper part of this park, this is county's opinion that the road is sufficient right now? Okay. Okay, I guess, other questions before we attempt to seal the deal here?
I guess nobody will make a motion, I'll work on it. I recommend that we approve the conditional use permit and certify the final environmental impact report based upon findings in our packet. And then also incorporate Harry's motion in, into this final recommendation on hunting.
Second?
Okay, is there any further comment or?
Just, just as a clarification, based on the issue relating to hunting, we will be modifying Condition One U on your agenda packet that's on page fifty-seven to indicate that there will be no hunting, other than that for depredation.
Yep.
That's correct.
Motion.
Okay.
Okay, with that, then no further discussion. I will call for the question. Let me see, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, oh, did you say no?
Yes.
Okay, we need to do a roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, motion carries. And so, let me see, I guess at this point in time, we're gonna take a little bit of a break for a while?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. We're gonna take a break and have something to eat and then be back for the one o'clock item. It'll probably be one-thirty-ish.
Okay. So for folks that are here for the one o'clock item, we'll be ready to go at one-thirty.
The appeal rights.
Oh, just a minute, folks, I missed something here. So don't leave the room yet. I should remember this, but the decision, hey, folks? Hey, could I have everybody's attention again, please? Okay, I forgot to talk about the appeal rights. The decision we just made is appealable. And any appeals need to be submitted to the Planning Department within the next ten days. And the fee for the appeal is four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Now you can go.
Now you can go. Thank you.
I failed to say I'm a hunter.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And our agenda item this afternoon is the zoning text amendment for medical marijuana collectives, cooperatives, and dispensaries. And with that, we have Jennifer. That's gonna make a presentation.
Good afternoon. Jennifer DeZackwick, Plaster County Planning Department. And right off the gate, I just want to point out one thing that was incorrect in the staff report, it's not major, is that we also noticed the Sierra Sun. So Kathy pointed that out to me, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. So a quick overview of what we're here to do today. Again, it's a proposed zoning text amendment, and we're looking at defining medical marijuana collectives, co-ops, and dispensaries, as well, and disallowing this use as a land use and a business here in all zoning districts in Placer County. And also clarifying that crop production and agriculture processing do not include production and composting of cannabis. So getting into a little bit of the background to help you understand what's going on here. State and federal laws conflict, of course. Under the federal legislation, marijuana is illegal for any purpose. But as you may know, that in 2009, the US Department of Justice stopped prosecuting medical marijuana dispensaries that were operating legally under state rules. And as you also may know from the staff report, that the state legislation, the Health and Safety Code allows seriously ill patients in residents of California access to medical marijuana for medical purposes. And Placer County regulations currently do not define, does not have a defined land use associated with businesses or land use for collectives, co-ops, and dispensaries. And getting a little bit into the Compassionate Use Act and the state legislation was passed in 1996, and it's for seriously ill patients to have access to marijuana for medical purposes. And really, the legislation, to put it in my own words, it provides a legal defense against being arrested or provides criminal sanction if you're using medical marijuana. And this law also encouraged the federal and state governments to force work together to provide for safe distribution and affordable distribution of medical marijuana. And then in 2004, Senate Bill 420 was passed, and that established the medical marijuana program. And that has to do with the patient ID program. And the patient ID is basically you carry an ID with you, and you're registered with the county, and the county currently has a program in place. And all of the amendments that we're talking about here will not affect the local ID program that the county runs. And it's basically, again, to protect you against arrest from, if you're walking down the street, you have an ID card that says you're registered with the county, and the sheriffs comply with the rules of those cards. In addition, Senate Bill 420 also expanded some of the Compassionate Use Acts to transportation and other circumstances, again, against arrest and criminal prosecution. And it broadened allowing patients to collectively grow and cultivate medical marijuana, and it added additional users to who could possess medical marijuana. And it also limited places you could smoke. And also from this legislation, requirements for the Attorney General to create guidelines. And of course, in 2008, these guidelines were released, and they were basically to ensure that marijuana produced for medical purposes doesn't remain secure and doesn't fall into the hands for illegal use. And these, the guidelines were attached to your staff report, Attachment B. And again, they secured medical marijuana from illegal use, non-patient use. It also helped law enforcement understand the rules of the legislation, and it also helped patient and caregivers understand the rules of the legislation. But those are, again, they're just guidelines to implementing the Health and Safety Code. So the reason we're here this afternoon, page six of the staff report, I'm not gonna read through this entire definition, but county staff has worked collaboratively with county council to develop a definition here for our zoning ordinance that would define medical marijuana collectives, co-ops, and dispensaries. And as I said at the beginning, we're also modifying agriculture processing and crop production that cannabis would not be included in these uses. And let's talk a little bit about our definition, what's included and what's being proposed. So proposed in the definition, the definition for medical marijuana, and it would prohibit businesses and land uses within Placer County that would operate as a medical marijuana collective, co-op, or dispensary. And the definition also does not include licensed state facilities. That might include clinics, health facilities, residential care facilities, and hospices. And all of that is written out in that definition, and it references the exact Health and Safety Code, and you would have to be a licensed facility under the Health and Safety Code. So that's basically saying, these uses, those clinics, health facilities, are not included in that definition of medical marijuana collectives, co-ops, and dispensaries. And kind of getting into, putting it into, how do you understand all of this and what's really going on here? And just understanding the distinction between land use regulations and state law. And I had a hard time going through this, so I'm gonna try to put it in planner words, and Karen over there will help me, help you understand the state rules and the state law. But as you all know, Chapter 17 regulates land use in Placer County. And the Compassionate Use Act and Senate Bill 420, that legislation, it provides criminal sanction for qualified patients and caregivers when they possess, transport, and collectively grow through collectives or co-ops medical marijuana. It does not provide for or mandate land use regulations of these uses, like collectives and co-ops. It doesn't say you have to allow these. So Placer County code is really where individuals would be looking at when they come in and propose they want to do a business. It's not the state law that rules there, it's Placer County would be looking at that, because the state regulations deal with protection from criminal prosecution and arrest. And I think the best way, I want to walk you through a real quick example here, is that when we're talking, I know I've been here a couple times talking to you about housing elements and state laws and updating our housing element to be consistent. This example really helped me understand the difference. And you all know how state laws regulate land use for housing, special needs housing. For example, emergency shelters, we were dictated, we have to create one zoning district that allows an emergency shelter. We were told that by state law, so we have to be consistent with that. In the state laws that we're looking at here in the Health and Safety Code, they did not mandate land use regulations to the local jurisdictions. They simply came up with laws that protected patients and caregivers from being arrested and prosecuted. So that, really, when I kind of understood that, it made it a lot easier for understanding, because I think the question came up and was posed to me, why are you disallowing collectives and co-ops when it's talked in and allowed in the state legislation? The state legislation, again, even though the guidelines, when you read through the guidelines, and as a land use planner, you're always thinking land use, land use, when you read about business practices. It was trying to give guidance to people that wanted to cooperatively grow. It didn't say explicitly it is an allowed land use by, you know, the state or local jurisdictions who regulate land use. And so, just like the housing zoning text amendment that we were talking about, the state actually did regulate how we had to deal with land use there in that case. That's not the case here. Here, that code is really for prevention of criminal prosecution. And what we're doing here is talking about land use in Placer County and businesses in Placer County. Again, so after staff reviewed this, we looked into other jurisdictions and what's going on. I'm sure you're all aware, this is a contentious issue. A hundred and twenty-eight other jurisdictions have banned, and this is statistics for dispensaries, have banned dispensaries, and thirty-nine are regulating, and I have kind of approximates in that, I don't think I've updated this information, there could have been more information provided, you know, in the last month. And we also, as we researched the legislation and researched the issues, we determined that it is a legitimate public safety, there's, public safety is associated with co-ops, collectives, and dispensaries operating as businesses or being allowed to be as land uses in Placer County. And Attachment C of the staff report is a really descriptive report produced by the Police Chiefs Association of California on medical marijuana dispensaries, and they walked through the laws and legislations and conflicts and some of the issues that have come about as dispensaries have been established in other communities. And some of the issues that have come about, of course, are reports of increased illegal drug use, illegal drug sales, robberies, loitering around dispensaries, and falsely attained ID cards. So with that, I'm ready to make a recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt the findings in the staff report and make a recommendation to the Board of Suits, but I do realize this is a public hearing, so I'll be able to answer any questions.
Well, I might have a question. Does anybody else have a question at this point? I guess I thought, and I guess I don't understand the full realm of medical marijuana, but I wonder if marijuana or the active ingredients that are necessary for the medical purposes of marijuana, if they become available like in the trade where pharmacies, like a pharmacy is, would this affect, would it prohibit pharmacies from offering this? If it just becomes, I guess it'd be a state law or something that'd have to be passed, but...
Lawsuits pending in various jurisdictions and various areas. We would have to take it a step at a time. If it was a mandate from either the legislature or through the courts that jurisdictions are to allow through, for example, pharmacies, we would have to look at our zoning code and see how we would amend it. This is all pending on how the commission moves and works with what's before the commission. This is a policy decision. It's a policy decision that's before the commission to either accept what staff is recommending, to suggest modifications. There's a vast range of possibilities, but we would, because it's constantly evolving, we would have to take it a step at a time, and we would be, it would be in our best interest, obviously, to look at that as these sort of things are decided down the line.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, I guess my question, because I was reading here where it says that, when it says it excludes licensed clinic, health facility, residential care facility, you know, for the elderly, those aren't falling under what we're doing today, right?
That's exactly right.
So if somebody went to a medical facility and said, "I needed it," and they have it available, then they could get it, get it under medical care.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Kay is it, for the commission? Okay, at this time, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, I might mention also that John Weaver with the Sheriff's Office is also in the audience right here, in case you have any questions of him.
Okay, yeah, would you like to make a couple of comments, Mr. Weaver?
Sir, I'm just here to answer questions. If you have any questions for law enforcement. The Placer County Sheriff's Department has no stance on this, but we're here to answer your questions and fill you in on anything that you may need. The Placer County Sheriff's Department follows the Attorney General's guidelines when it comes to the arrest and prosecution of medical marijuana folks. If they have a legitimate medical marijuana card, if they're under the legal amounts given by the Attorney General's Office, they're not prosecuted, nor are they arrested. If they're over the amount, they are arrested and it's up to District Attorney's Office whether or not they want to prosecute. But if you need anything dealing with stats or anything of that nature, I'm here to answer your questions from a law enforcement perspective.
Okay. Any questions this time for, sorry to... Yeah, you'll hang around, I'm sure we'll have some before we're through. Okay, with that, at this time, what I'd like to do is open it up for people to speak. And what I'll do is, one at a time, invite you forward. I think try to hold your comments to three minutes or so, you know, we won't have an absolute cutoff, because it looks like, well, let me ask how many people are gonna speak. Okay, so, yeah, try to hold your comments to three minutes or so. We don't need repetitive comments necessarily, but you can truly express your opinion. So at this time, I'll invite anybody that wants to come forward to come forward.
Good afternoon, I'll start the ball rolling. My name is Tim Hare.
Oh, yeah, I might ask you too to identify yourself, your name and address and those types of things.
Yeah, my name is Tim Hare. I live at 12480 Elson Drive, right here in Auburn. I'm here today to ask, I was under the assumption that there was gonna be a vote today, and it was gonna be whether there would be a ban placed in the county, so I was a little bit misinformed, but I'll go on with what I would like to say. I hope that you, I also, did you receive, I brought a packet for everybody yesterday, so you folks could all have a packet from me.
That's right.
Which, with Jennifer's report, I gave my reports, it kind of rebuts a lot of what she had to say. Anyway, I'm standing here, and I'm hoping to make a difference in some people's lives, but most importantly, I'm trying to make a difference in my life and my family. I've been a resident of Placer County since 1977, and I've been a business owner for about 20 years. I was a business owner. I lost, I had, the last business I owned was beyond paving here in Auburn. I had that business for about eight years, and due to this economy, I lost that paving business. I stand here today with no business, no job, and tomorrow doesn't look very good either. I probably could collect state disability if I was one of those kind of people, but I, I need to work. I need, I just need, I'm the kind of man that just has to be working to supply for his home, his family. Anyway, I'm not here as a get-rich scam. I believe that this business could be ran in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department and other neighbors of this community, other business neighbors. I think this business could be ran very legitimate, and, let me take a breath. This economy has taken a toll on all of us, and I've tried to cut, tried to put something else together besides the paving, since the paving went by the side, and I tell you that I'm pretty desperate at this point. And this is what literally, being a patient myself, this is what led me to be here today, is I can't find a business out there that people have the money to support. So I'm come to this conclusion, I'll try this. I'm just trying to earn a wage, that's all I'm really after. I am, I am a professional businessman, and I believe that I'm an honest businessman. I've worked with a number of heads of the Department of Placer County when I was out there paving, putting different problems together, solving problems together, so I know I could be a good, a good services community. I've taken classes, I've studied the guidelines, I've visited seventeen other dispensaries, I asked them questions about, you know, this thing about security, and I'm hearing about in that report, there was so much negativity, so I went out to dispensaries myself firsthand, and there's, there's not this, they're actually making the neighbors, the places around them more secure by, because of the security that the dispensary has, their neighbors are more secure. And I'm seeing that the community, once the community, I'm also finding, is educated a little more about medical marijuana, and then not to have a bunch of potheads out in the parking lot, that it's just for patients to come and pick up their medicine and leave, that more people are more open-minded to it. We have liquor stores on the corners, and those are run fine, and my own personal belief is, and personal experiences... personal belief is, and personal experiences, alcohol sure caused me a lot more difficulties than medical marijuana ever has. So, this, this, voters, we spoke in 1996, and we've been speaking since, and a lot, some of these counties have allowed it, and it looks to me like it's, it's coming. And, and what I want, and I'm asking the Planning Commission, is don't, don't put this off and let other counties deal with it, and let's watch and be a father, follower of somebody else's decisions. I'm saying let's, let's step out and let's lead this thing. Let's, let's lead this, let's, don't become followers, please. There's a place here for me to get a job, there's a place here for the county to get its revenue, there's a place for me to put eight people that I laid off my crew back to work. I mean, the, the jobs are phenomenal if we could let this happen, and that's what we really need is jobs. I'm, I'm eight months under on my own. I mean, it's, it's, it's bad out here. Yeah, I'm leaving it at that. I mean, I think I've spoken from the heart.
Okay, thank you. Next.
My name's Jim Henry, I'm from Colfax, and not real wise to the political reasoning. Primarily, I'm here to make sure that, first of all, I'm not sure if the county adopts these ordinances, if it controls the city of Colfax. There's a medical dispensary there now, I don't want my medicine taken away from me. I think it's obvious even in the report that you saw that we're supposed to have safe access. Safe access, doesn't mean running to Sacramento. Come on, you guys.
Thank you.
If I could clarify for the last speaker, the zoning ordinances within Placer County cover only the unincorporated areas, they do not cover incorporated cities.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Michael Savestina, 1339 Kingsway, Kings Beach, California, Lake Tahoe. I'm here, I'd actually like to start off by saying I feel offended as a patient for how many times the word criminal was used in Jennifer's presentation. There's nothing crimina, criminal about my condition, there's nothing criminal about me being a patient and trying to acquire my medicine. Now, as a resident of Lake Tahoe, there are three different dispensaries in Eldorado County of South Shore. Now, to me, it's kind of ridiculous to tell me as a patient that I have to risk my life to go get my medicine, and that is what you were doing. This week, we're supposed to get five to 10 feet of snow. It's ridiculous to tell me that I have to drive over Donner Summit to get to the club in Colfax to get my medicine, or to drive through to South Shore to acquire my medicine. It's, you know, for the patient's safety, A. B, doctors are prescribing this. My medication is no different from your Zocor or your Altamol or any cholesterol, blood pressure medicine that you use. I use my medication responsibly for the reasons that it's supposed to be. Now, there are businesses that have opened and have made a really bad stance and made, you know, marijuana look really bad, and I agree with that. You know, I, I, as a patient, I do not like the fact that there's more clubs in LA County than there are Starbucks's. I think that is ridiculous. But I'm trying to open up a business in North Tahoe, in, outside of Tahoe City. I have over 300 signatures of Tahoe City residents that have supported me in, in my trying to open up a collective. So, you know, and those, those aren't only patients, those are everyone that are saying, you know, "I'm going to drive by this building and I don't care, because I know this person, you know, the store that I'm trying to open up will follow all the guidelines that California has set in place." And I'm not trying to open up a pop club, I'm trying to open up a medical marijuana collective. I'm trying to open up a professional business where people can come and acquire their medication. I'm trying to open up a standardized business. My family owns a pharmacy. We've already tried to go through Placer County to sell marijuana through the pharmacy as a licensed pharmacist and as pharmacist technician. Now, Placer County's said that they're not taking a stance on it, whatever. It's kind of odd to me that out of Tahoe City, I already have my business application that's gone through with flying colors. On Monday, someone from the Planning Department is, one of the inspectors of the Planning Department is meeting with my landlord, and they, if all goes well, will be approving me, and I should be opening up Tahoe City Holistic Center. Now, I think it's kind of ridiculous that we're voting in 2010 in this state to legalize marijuana on a level for anyone over 21, same as alcohol. Now, what's going to happen, like, I see the board, the way I interpreted Jennifer's presentation, is they don't want medical marijuana dispensaries to open up because they don't want the look of it. I'm not trying to open up the look of it, and in 2010, if this passes, which the last poll said the 55% of Californians did agree with medical marijuana or just legalizing it in general, if that passes, you're going to have, you know, this whole meeting is going to be nullified, it's going to be a waste of all of our time, and what's going to happen is there's going to be 20 or 30 people from the Bay or LA coming up to, you know, to Tahoe, and that are going to open up pop clubs, they're going to, you know, have a huge marijuana flag flying high for everyone to see. That's not what we want. We want to keep it small, we want to keep it local. I'm a Kiwanis member, I'm joining the Business Association, the North Tahoe Chamber of Commerce supports me. To me, it's a no-brainer issue. I'm trying to support patients able to get their medicine at a reasonable price, standardize the industry, so every, every time you come in to get your medication, it's the same just as if you were coming to a pharmacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Terry Andrew, and I live on Gold Hill Road in Newcastle. And originally, I came here to support the expansion of the Hidden Falls Regional Park, and then I noticed this on the agenda, and it kind of struck me as odd that the voters of California in 1996 passed Prop 215 authorizing the use of medical marijuana, which I supported. I'm not a medical marijuana user, but I know there are benefits through reading and research that marijuana does provide benefit to patients who use this drug. So I, I feel that for Placer County to kind of thwart the will of the state voters without a vote within Placer County, I mean, you're going to authorize it and present it to the Board of Supervisors, I understand that's the process, that kind of leaves me out of the process, I believe, after I voted for the proposition in 96. And I don't know if you feel that conflict, but I certainly do. I fully believe in regulating this dispensaries or collectives or whatever you want to call it. I talked to the Sheriff's Department earlier in the day, discussing it with them, and I realize there are complications through listening to them in approving this type of land use, crime and drugs and whatever else negative effects you want to believe happen around these collectives. But I know for a fact that there is a place for medical marijuana dispensaries in people's, that would improve people's health, and that's what I want you to consider, would like you to consider when you make this decision on whether to ban collectives. Listening to the gentleman a little earlier, I don't feel it was right for him to be able, or have to be able to go 40, 50 miles to get a medication that a doctor has approved for him, so I'd like you, like for you to consider that, that there is a place for this, there are legitimate benefits. When I read this pamphlet here, everything in the back of it, the amendments or the attachments are negative. There's nothing in here that I saw that would explain the benefits of medical marijuana use. So, there is, I'd advise you to research it if you have the time, and I'd like your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Adrian Bennett, I'm from Tahoe City, and I represent the Tahoe Herbal Care Collective. We are based up Truckee, but we do have over 100 members in the Placer County area, and I'm kind of just wondering how this is going to affect us, because in your literature or in the wording, it describes mobile service, and we do have to bring it to them, so, in your, the language mentions banning collectives and cooperatives, and we have the right under state law to, to form these collectives and cooperatives, and members may contribute financially. This was confirmed by the California Supreme Court case, David Williams versus Buick County in September of 2007. I forwarded a copy of this case to the Planning Department. In your report, the staff recommends adopting your ordinance because medical marijuana dispensaries, collectives and cooperatives are likely to cause an increase in crime. I'm not sure if the sheriff knows, but I'm wondering if he knows if there has been a lot of crime associated with the dispensary in Colfax?
Please, please address the Commission up there.
Okay. I'm pretty sure there hasn't been any incidences of crime, but our collective has been operating for eight months now, and we have not had one instance of crime ourself. We haven't even had one person try to call us and try to get medicine without having the correct paperwork. I'm almost positive there has not been one single complaint to local officials about us either. And according to Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck, medical marijuana clinics are not typically the magnets for crime that critics often portray. If dispensaries did attract crime, you'd expect crime to rise in areas with high concentrations of dispensaries like Los Angeles or Oakland, but in fact, crime has gone down 5% in Los Angeles last year and 10% in Oakland last year. In your report, you mentioned how sales tax revenues would likely be offset by the increased costs in the regulating, licensing and processing background checks on operators, as well as an increased demand for law enforcement. The cost of regulating could be offset by implementing a marijuana tax similar to the one that Oakland just implemented last summer. Background checks on operators can be paid for by the operators. And as far as an increase in local enforcement calls, like I mentioned before, I'm pretty sure Colfax hasn't had any issues, and they've been there for over five years. So I hope to see the Planning Department make some serious changes to this ordinance before passing it on to the Board of Supervisors. I recommend the county forms a committee to help draft a more reasonable ordinance, which gives medical marijuana patients in unincorporated Placer County safe access to their medicine. I would be happy to volunteer for such a committee. I also request that if this ordinance is passed, that there is an exemption for Tahoe Herbal Care and any other collective or cooperative that has been operating to the state. Tahoe Herbal Care hopes that we will be able to continue to help our members in Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Andrew Scott, and I work, or I live in Lincoln, and I would ask the board here today to go, to disallow medical dispensaries in Placer County. I won't talk about what I believe is the fallacy of medical marijuana being a medical drug, but I will say that other jurisdictions are desperately trying to door, they, close a door they unwisely opened, and I would ask that our Planning Commission not open that same door that other jurisdictions are trying desperately, desperately to close. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done? Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll, I'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion, deliberation, and a decision.
Well, I have a question concerning the possible increase in crime. It seems to me that that would be just the opposite of what would happen if we didn't have dispensaries, in the sense that people who would go out and attempt to buy their medical marijuana would have more problem criminally than, say, if there was a place for them to go.
Anybody have a thought, or are you directing that to anybody specifically?
No, just the Commission in general for information.
I guess a couple of questions come up. One is, with the process that's used to get the identification card, you hear that they're pretty easy to get in some, in most cases, and I don't know whether that's true or not true, because I'm not part of that issue, but I, that, that is one issue. The other issue is, I've heard some interesting reports that say you can get conventional treatment with pills or typical pharmacy drugs that serve the same purpose for people that claim that they can only use medical marijuana. And I just, I, I don't know where that issue is, and it seems like it would be good to have a little more information of whether those issues are valid, or, you know, is it just?
Well, wouldn't those issues have been, come up before Proposition 215 was passed to start with?
Well, they have. There's no question about it.
And it was passed with those issues already raised, so, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I just don't know where, how, I, I'm not speaking for or against it, I just...
Well, let me see, maybe kind of, I'd get a little clarification from staff, like, we don't have a medical person here, so I don't know if we can get a medical answer, but at any rate, at least as I understand it, what this is saying is that, at least I'm presuming that people that are qualified to have medical marijuana have some kind of a prescription from a physician or somebody that's in a position to approve it?
So, I think I'll, I'll take a stab at this.
Okay.
And, and what we're, again, to kind of focus, what we're here looking at today are land use issues, not, you know, the state law is a state law when it has pertains to medical marijuana, and as you know, that's contentious and what's going on in the state. But what we're looking at here is businesses opening up here in the county that would be either considered a collective, co-op or dispensary, as we're defining it. We're not saying people can't utilize the law for criminal prosecution to not ever use medical marijuana. We're saying businesses and land uses would not be allowed in Placer County.
Okay, well, I guess maybe to get to the bottom of my question, I was really starting to sort through it a little bit, but at any rate, you know, I guess I'm making the assumption that it takes a doctor to get a card, and the, what I'm reading here is that this land use decision would not preclude medical facilities from providing, providing the drug or the marijuana to somebody that needs it. Is that correct?
I think you might be mixing up two things.
Probably.
First of all, under the Compassionate Use Act and, and the Senate bill, the bill that came down, providing more detailed aspects of the program, the state mandated and the county has complied by instituting and conducting a program by which if an individual comes in to, and requests an identification card as either a qualified patient or a primary caregiver, the county will issue that. What is required in order to issue that is something that our Public Health Department takes care of and the state. We don't have that information, it's a completely separate program, it is not in any way affected by this ordinance, it's, it's completely separate, and that runs and operates in and of itself.
Yeah, so, so given that, then somebody that's got a card, and they're authorized to have marijuana in their possession, and they apparently need it because they have the card, you know, once we do the land use decision here, where, or how do they acquire?
Yes. Somebody else?
Oh, hold it, we're having, yeah, 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 we're, you know, we close the public hearing, so we need to really deal with staff on these questions amongst ourselves for now.
So they would have to go to a jurisdiction that allowed a legal dispensary, or provide their own? So, I mean, if that's the answer, they would have to, as I understand, like, there's a dispensary in Colfax, residents of Placer County would have to go to a jurisdiction that allowed these types of land uses and business to operate.
Could, could their doctor?
Or, or they could grow their own. I mean, under the law, you can have your own plants and produce your own crop, but you would not be able to go to somebody and purchase it saying, "I have an identification card, so I, I need medical marijuana."
Could their doctor, could their doctor distribute it to them through their clinic, through his clinic or her clinic?
And as you look at the definition that we're proposing for the zoning text amendment, again, the licensed facilities, that being the care facilities, I'd have to flip back to my definition. Yeah. Sorry, is that really lengthy definition? It's state licensed facilities for clinic, health facilities, residential care facilities and hospices are not included in our definition for dispensaries. So those types of uses?
If they wanted to, they could distribute it.
Would give it to their patients under prescription and under the law.
Okay. Thanks, that answers my question. Thank you. That answers my question. Go ahead.
Okay, my information goes back several months, but I believe when I asked Public Health back probably last March, there were seven cards that have been issued so far.
Okay, commission members, more questions or discussion?
Let me ask, we're not looking at the medical question at all, really. We're looking at land use, just like it was at liquor store. And it seems to me that that would be the intent of the zoning text amendment was to, in this case, disallow any liquor stores, shall we say, or any dispensaries in that case. My opinion would be it would be better for us to try to control and regulate where they are rather than not have them and have people go out and subject themselves to either driving through snowstorms or having to deal with, quote, criminal element. So that would just be my feeling, is it would be better for us to try to control it, just like liquor store and something like that.
I think to a certain extent, though, really the county is, because they're saying in incorporated areas that allow it, that's where they'll get it. So in the cities and stuff versus going out on some rural road and saying, okay, I'm going to put a dispensary or co-op out here in middle of nowhere.
Yeah, we're deliberating here, so we have to close the public hearing.
So, I mean, that's, that's what I, I see.
I'm not following.
In other words, well, if it's an incorporated area, an incorporated city, they can have them there if the city says, okay, you can have a dispensary here or whatever. But from the county standpoint, not on any county property.
But that's what we're voting for zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
You can have a liquor store in the city, but you can't have it in the county.
Yeah.
You can have a pharmacy in Auburn, you can't have a pharmacy anywhere in north or basically in the east end of the county because there's no incorporated area.
Of course, this doesn't deal with pharmacies.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to use similar because we don't have anything that's the same as this, right? Okay.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Oh, go ahead, Jeffrey.
No.
Okay. Well, I think at this point, since we've wound down, if somebody would like to make a motion, you're welcome.
I'll motion, I'll motion that we don't accept the staff's report and that we reconsider the zoning text amendment to allow it in incorporated areas of the county.
Is there a second? Okay, motion fails because you lack a second. Do you have any more discussion or another motion?
Well, I don't know that anybody wants to make a motion to approve it either, so, because I don't think it's... I don't feel comfortable with it yet. Oh, all right, go ahead.
Well, well, okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve it as written. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Any more discussion? I think we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Setterson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Crab?
Yes.
Mr. Brenton is absent. Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Maybe as a, just want to clarify, that was a motion to recommend ban on medicinal facilities?
Correct.
Okay, as per the staff report.
As written in the staff report.
And...
Okay, well, let me see, let me go on here. We've supported the staff's support and there is an opportunity, well, this goes automatically to the Board of Supervisors anyway, doesn't it?
Yes, now, what we'll do is we will forward the planning commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
And there will be another opportunity, there'll be another public hearing in front of the Board of Supervisors where we'll bring the planning commission's recommendation to them. So if there's anybody that would like to be on a distribution list, we'd be happy to get your information and make sure you're contacted about that public hearing when it does happen in the future.
Okay. Well, thank you, folks. Hearing's closed.